The folks online, can you hear us okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Excellent.
All right.
All right. That's Linder. I think you're the only one that needs to turn your microphone off.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. So I think we should go ahead and get started here. So. All right. I'm going to go ahead and bring our city council meeting for Monday, April 28th, 2025 to order. Let's go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance and then we'll do roll call after that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God in indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We need music. Okay, well, I'll let you work on that. Okay. Let's go ahead and let's do roll call here. Counselor Myers.
Here.
Counselor Cuthbertson.
Here.
Counselor Williams.
Here.
Counselor Lindner.
Here.
Counselor Ray.
Here.
And then we have Mr. Murray here as well.
Thank you.
Okay. See here, we're going to start off now with public comments. Could I ask one of the counselors to read two dot one, please?
I'll go for it.
Thank you.
The public comment period is designed to gain input from the public. Public comment is not intended to be a dialogue between the council, staff, and any person making a comment. Any person who raises a question during public comment should rest assured that the city staff is making a note of your question and the council and staff will work together to identify the appropriate city official to follow up with you directly.
Thank you. Do you have any public comments this evening? This is your big chance, three minutes. Come up to the podium, introduce yourself, tell us what's on your mind. Nobody? Are we sure? Okay, going once. Going twice. Okay, so three. All right, we'll move on. No public comments this evening. We'll go ahead and dive right in. Sheriff, we have you online. Looks like you're outside.
I am.
Perhaps having fun? I don't know. I'm just hoping.
Like I said earlier in our communication, on my way back from Eastern Oregon, my son had his last collegiate weekend playing baseball, so I didn't quite make it. So we found a really cool dog park in Wilsonville.
Okay.
That's where I'm at right now.
Great. Thank you for joining us tonight.
I assume you all have the stats in front of you there. I can't see because I'm working off my laptop here. But you can see it was a pretty busy month as far as activities go in the community. While you're taking a look at that, I have some other stuff I'd like to report out to you as well. During the month, this last weekend, we wrapped up our search and rescue academy. And the search and rescue academy is a nine-week course and it's every Thursday and Saturday. We had fifteen members from Benton County and nine members from Polk County participate. And they learn everything from how to start a fire to not tying to they had the Black Hawk come in. I mean, you kind of name it. They cover the gamut.
Wow.
Then the last night, which was this last weekend, they do a 24-hour deal where they have to stay up all night long, build a fire. The fire, they have to care for the fire and it kind of simulates caring for a patient overnight. So the fire can't go out. Everybody graduated over the course of the SAR Academy. There's about thirty-five or forty folks that participate. And you've got to remember, with the exception of Kevin Higgins and John Abey, that most of everybody else is a volunteer. So it's one of those deals where it kind of takes the village and this was a huge success and I couldn't be any happier about it. Secondly is emergency management. Brian Lee is the emergency manager for Benton County through the sheriff's office and he. He's actually in 2024, he did receive emergency manager of the year through both the Oregon Emergency Management Council and through Oregon State Sheriffs. But as the chairperson through the state sheriffs of emergency management, Brian Lee has instituted an incident management team or an IMT. And it kind of is pretty timely. It was, you know, he was thinking fires and big catastrophic events that relate to the valley. And they actually activated the IMT this in the last two weeks and went down to Harney County and helped with all the flooding down there. And Brian and the emergency managers that participated were instrumental in helping Harney County kind of just get back on their feet and stay afloat and they worked closely with the state of Oregon. So I'm pretty proud of Brian for that and it's pretty cool. And again, he's your emergency manager. So I'm pretty excited for Brian. For the patrol division, for the first, and I don't know, I know that I was going to try and get somebody down there from patrol. Is there anybody in the room from the patrol division?
Yes.
Who do we have down there?
Why don't you go ahead and come on up here, deputy?
We have Brig there. Okay. I didn't know if Brig was going to make it or not. I know that he.
He's here. I got them come up to a microphone right now.
Okay. No, that's all right. I just, I just wanted to let you know that for the patrol division, for the first time in my career as your sheriff, and I think probably in the first time in the career of the sheriff's office, patrol division is fully staffed.
Wow, nice.
Forty folks in patrol full-time and two part-time folks. The two part-timers, one is a forest deputy and Al Sherman Horn used to be a corporal. And now he works part-time as a forest deputy. And then we also have a part-timer that works marine patrol along with the full-time staff in marine patrol. So I'm pretty excited about that and just being staffed up finally. We've got three patrol dogs, well, two patrol dogs and a detection dog. We've got a full assortment of detectives now. I mean, it's pretty cool. And Brig, Deputy Savage there, he's a vital part of this. And so I'm just happy to have him on board. I'm happy to have everybody else on board. For the community of Monroe, I did do some number crunching and I took a look. And for calls for service. In 2022, we had eleven hundred and twenty calls for service in Monroe. In 23, we had eight hundred and ninety-seven calls for service. In 2024, we had ten, ten forty-four, one thousand forty-four. And through 2025, we've got two hundred and thirty-six through March. So we're right there at about that, a thousand, thousand calls for service every year down in Monroe. And so I just, I wanted to give you that information as well, just so you had it to know. And then lastly, in the jail, the jail division, we are in July one, going to stop taking our adults in custody to Norcore. And we're going to start taking them to the hub in Salem where they'll be picked up by Clatsop County. And then they'll, Clatsop County will then start housing them in their facility in Astoria at Warranton, actually. And so it's, and there should be a pretty significant cost savings, both through the bed rental program. And as it relates to deputies, usage of deputy time, vehicles, I mean, it looks, I think it's going to be a holistic savings. Savings and we'll, I'll be able to give you some better numbers, I would hope, about December, about halfway through the year, just so you have an idea of what those savings look like. And then, of course, first responders day. We worked with the mayor and I think we've landed on a day and we've already.
Yes, at last.
Captain Duffett has tapped the reserves and the marine deputies and already got on their radar. So. I'm excited for that as well. So I appreciate everything that the city of Monroe has done for the sheriff's office and I hope we're doing everything that you guys are hopeful as well. And so with that, I'll stop talking and see if you guys have any questions or follow up for me.
I have a question, Sheriff. I remember a year and a half or two years ago, you and Commissioner Algero came down here and talked about a new jail that was being built. What, is that still underway or what's the?
So the bond measure failed. And they were able to come up with monies, the county was, to build a new courthouse and then we, and then I shouldn't say they came up with monies. There's quite a bit of grant money and federal monies and matching funds that are going in to a new courthouse and then similarly with an emergency operations center. We're going to build a new ELC that will house search and rescue and emergency management at the compound, the complex. But we won't have a new jail. That did not pass. And so we've kind of gone back to the drawing board on that and. We, of course, need a new facility. Ours is old and outdated and it, because of that, and I think you guys recall. We weren't able to do certain things that we'd like to be able to do for the AICs and for the folks that are going to return to our community and our population. So we're still working on things, but it has slowed a bit just because the monies didn't come through. So there's no jail now, but I can tell you that I still rent ten beds in Polk County. And I've kept those beds, those ten beds full for, they're occupied ever since I was sworn in. That was the promise I made to, to the Board of Commissioners. And we're just going to figure out how many folks and what the cost savings will be when we go to Clatsop County.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions on what's on the report?
No, I mean, I did hear a few car alarms going off, but I couldn't locate where they were at. But it looks like some of these reports here are. In my area, so. I think somebody was knocking on doors, cars, setting them off because it was like three or four alarms at once.
If I could make just a real quick comment.
Yeah, go for it.
So last month, we had talked about the. Like the citations and traffic stops and stuff like that. And I told you guys I would. Ask about using some of our, like, traffic grant funding. I think you'll see this month, the numbers are a little bit more and that's because they have dedicated some of that grant funding specifically to. The city of Monroe and us coming and doing overtime patrols here. And that looks like it's going to continue for a while. I'd pass that on to Captain Duffett and Lieutenant Bottorf and they immediately jumped on it. And so. Like I said, I think, I think you are going to see a little bit more of a presence for us doing traffic stops, so.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I am fairly certain I heard Lieutenant Bottorf down here early, early one morning running traffic.
Yeah, he, it looks like he did a school zone one because that was some of the concerns that they brought up.
So. Great. Thank you very much. Have anything else for us? Nope. Okay, counsel, I'll ask you if you have any other questions?
I appreciate you guys.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. I know we need one of you guys to stick around a little longer.
If the sheriff's, it looks like he's in the middle of something, so I can stick.
I will absolutely stick around. That's no problem whatsoever.
Okay. All right. We appreciate both of you being here. Thank you.
You can flip a coin, right?
Right. Okay. All right. Mr. Schultz, you want to come on up? We can talk to us about water and wastewater.
Park is sitting up front. I figured he'd do all the talking. All right. All right. That's Linder. I think you're the only one that needs to turn your microphone off.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. So I think we should go ahead and get started here. So. All right. I'm going to go ahead and bring our city council meeting for Monday, April 28th, 2025 to order. Let's go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance and then we'll do roll call after that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God in indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We need music? Okay, well, I'll let you work on that. Okay. Let's go ahead and let's do roll call here. Counselor Myers. Counselor Cuthbertson.
Here.
Counselor Williams.
Here.
Counselor Lindner.
Here.
Counselor Ray.
Here.
And then we have Mr. Murray here as well.
Thank you.
Okay. See here, we're going to start off now with public comments. Could I ask one of the counselors to read two dot one, please?
I'll go for it.
Thank you.
The public comment period is designed to gain input from the public. Public comment is not intended to be a dialogue between the council, staff, and any person making a comment. Any person who raises a question during public comment should rest assured that the city staff is making a note of your question and the council and staff will work together to identify the appropriate city official to follow up with you directly.
Thank you. All right. Do you have any public comments this evening? This is your big chance, three minutes. Come up to the podium, introduce yourself, tell us what's on your mind. Nobody? Are we sure? Okay, going once. Going twice. Okay, so three. All right, we'll move on. No public comments this evening. We'll go ahead and dive right in. Sheriff, we have you online. Looks like you're outside.
I am.
Perhaps having fun? I don't know. I'm just hoping.
Like I said earlier in our communication, on my way back from Eastern Oregon, my son had his last collegiate weekend playing baseball, so I didn't quite make it. So we found a really cool dog park in Wilsonville.
Okay.
That's where I'm at right now.
Great. Thank you for joining us tonight.
I assume you all have the stats in front of you there. I can't see because I'm working off my laptop here.
Yes, we do.
You can see it was a pretty, pretty busy month as far as activities go in the community. While you're taking a look at that, I have some other stuff I'd like to report out to you as well. During the month, this last weekend, we wrapped up our search and rescue academy. And the search and rescue academy is a nine-week course and it's every Thursday and Saturday. We had fifteen members from Benton County and nine members from Polk County participate. And they learn everything from how to start a fire to not tying to they had the Black Hawk come in. I mean, you kind of name it. They covered the gamut.
Wow.
And then the last night, which was this last weekend, they do a 24-hour deal where they have to stay up all night long, build a fire. The fire, they have to care for the fire and it kind of simulates caring for a patient overnight. So the fire can't go out. Everybody, everybody graduated. Over the course of the SAR Academy, there's about thirty-five or forty folks that participate. And you've got to remember, with the exception of Kevin Higgins and John Abey, that most of everybody else is a volunteer. So it's one of those deals where it kind of takes the village and this was a huge success and I couldn't be any happier about it. Secondly is emergency management. Brian Lee is the emergency manager for Benton County through the sheriff's office and he. He's, actually in 2024, he did receive emergency manager of the year through both the Oregon Emergency Management Council and through Oregon State Sheriffs. But as the chairperson through the state sheriffs of emergency management, Brian Lee has instituted an incident management team or an IMT. And it kind of, kind of is pretty timely. It was, you know, he was thinking fires and big catastrophic events that relate to the valley. And they actually activated the IMT this, this and last two weeks and went down to Harney County and helped with all the flooding down there. And Brian and the emergency managers that participated were instrumental in helping Harney County kind of just get back on their feet and stay afloat and they worked closely with the state of Oregon. So I'm pretty proud of Brian for that and it's pretty cool. And again, he's your emergency manager. So I'm pretty excited for Brian. For the patrol division, for the, and I don't know, I know that we were, I was going to try and get somebody down there from patrol. Is there anybody in the room from the patrol division?
Yes.
Who do we have down there?
Why don't you go ahead and come on up here, deputy?
We have Brig there. Okay. I didn't know if Brig was going to make it or not. I know that he.
He's here. I got them come up to a microphone right now.
Okay. No, that's all right. I just, I just wanted to let you know that for the patrol division, for the first time in my career as your sheriff, and I think probably in the first time in the career of the sheriff's office, patrol division is fully staffed.
Wow, nice.
Forty folks in patrol full-time and two part-time folks. The two part-timers, one is a forest deputy and Al Sherman Horn used to be a corporal. And now he works part-time as a forest deputy. And then we also have a part-timer that works marine patrol along with the full-time staff in marine patrol. So I'm pretty excited about that and just being staffed up finally. We've got three patrol dogs, well, two patrol dogs and a detection dog. We've got a full assortment of detectives now. I mean, it's pretty cool. And Brig, Deputy Savage there, he's a vital part of this. And so I'm just happy to, happy to have him on board. I'm happy to have everybody else on board. For the community of Monroe, I did do some numbers, number crunching and I took a look. And for calls for service. In 2022, we had eleven hundred and twenty calls for service in Monroe. In 23, we had eight hundred and ninety-seven calls for service. In 2024, we had ten, ten forty-four, one thousand forty-four. And through 2025, we've got two hundred and thirty-six through March. So we're right there at about that, a thousand, thousand calls for service every year down in Monroe. And so I just, I wanted to give you that information as well, just, just so you had it to know. And then lastly, in the jail, the jail division, we are in July one, going to stop taking our adults in custody to Norcore. And we're going to start taking them to the hub in Salem where they'll be picked up by Clatsop County. And then they'll, Clatsop County will then start housing them in their facility in Astoria at Warranton, actually. And so it's, and there should be a pretty significant cost savings, both through the bed rental program. And as it relates to deputies, usage of deputy time, vehicles, I mean, it looks, I think it's going to be a holistic savings, savings. And we'll, I'll be able to give you some better numbers, I would hope, about December, about halfway through the year, just so you have an idea of what those savings look like. And then, of course, first responders day. We worked with the mayor and I think we've landed on a day and we've already.
Yes, at last.
Captain Duffett has tapped the reserves and the marine deputies and already got on their radar. So. I'm excited for that as well. So I appreciate everything that the city of Monroe has done for the sheriff's office and I hope we're doing everything that you guys are hopeful as well. And so with that, I'll stop talking and see if you guys have any questions or follow up for me.
I have a question, Sheriff. I remember a year and a half or two years ago, you and Commissioner Algero came down here and talked about a new jail that was being built. What, is that still underway or what's the?
So the bond measure failed. And they were able to come up with monies, the county was, to build a new courthouse and then we, and then I shouldn't say they came up with monies. There's quite a bit of grant money and federal monies and matching funds that are going in to a new courthouse and then similarly with an emergency operations center. We're going to build a new ELC that will house search and rescue and emergency management at the compound, the complex. But we won't have a new jail. That did not pass. And so we've kind of gone back to the drawing board on that and. We, of course, need a new facility. Ours is old and outdated and it, because of that, and I think you guys recall. We weren't able to do certain things that we'd like to be able to do for the AICs and for the folks that are going to return to our community and our population. So we're still working on things, but it has slowed a bit just because the monies didn't come through. So there's no jail now, but I can tell you that I still rent ten beds in Polk County. And I've kept those beds, those ten beds full for, they're occupied ever since I was sworn in. That was the promise I made to, to the Board of Commissioners. And we're just going to figure out how many folks and what the cost savings will be when we go to Clatsop County.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions on what's on the report?
No, I mean, I did hear a few car alarms going off, but I couldn't locate where they were at. But it looks like some of these reports here are. In the, you know, in my area, so. I think somebody was knocking on doors, cars, setting them off because it was like three or four alarms at once.
If I could make just a real quick comment.
Yeah, go for it.
So last month, we had talked about the. Like the citations and traffic stops and stuff like that. And I told you guys I would. Ask about using some of our, like, traffic grant funding. I think you'll see this month, the numbers are a little bit more and that's because they have dedicated some of that grant funding specifically to. The city of Monroe and us coming and doing overtime patrols here. And that looks like it's going to continue for a while. I'd pass that on to Captain Duffett and Lieutenant Bottorf and they immediately jumped on it. And so. Like I said, I think, I think you are going to see a little bit more of a presence for us doing traffic stops, so.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I am fairly certain I heard Lieutenant Bottorf down here early, early one morning running traffic.
Yeah, he, it looks like he did a school zone one because that was some of the concerns that they brought up. So.
Great. Thank you very much. Have anything else for us? Nope. Okay, counsel, I'll ask you if you have any other questions? No?
I appreciate you guys.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. I know we need one of you guys to stick around a little longer.
If the sheriff's, it looks like he's in the middle of something, so I can stick.
I will absolutely stick around. That's no problem whatsoever.
Okay. All right. We appreciate both of you being here. Thank you.
You can flip a coin, right?
Right. Okay. All right. Mr. Schultz, you want to come on up? We can talk to us about water and wastewater.
Park is sitting up front. I figured he'd do all the talking. All right.
So there's no jail now, but I can tell you that I still rent ten beds in Polk County. And I've kept those beds, those ten beds full for, they're occupied ever since I was sworn in. That was the promise I made to, to the Board of Commissioners. And we're, we're just gonna figure out how many folks and what the cost savings will be when we go to Clatsop County.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions on what's on the report?
No, and I mean, I did hear a few car alarms going off, but I couldn't locate where they were at. But it looks like some of these reports here are in the, you know, in my area. So I think somebody was knocking on doors, cars, setting them off because it was like three or four alarms at once.
If I could make a, just a real quick comment.
Yeah, go for it.
So last month, we had talked about the like the citations and traffic stops and stuff like that. And I told you guys I would ask about using some of our, like, traffic grant funding. I think you'll see this month, the numbers are a little bit more. And that's because they have dedicated some of that grant funding specifically to the city of Monroe and us coming and doing overtime patrols here. And that looks like it's going to continue for a while. I'd pass that on to Captain Duffett and Lieutenant Bodorf. And they immediately jumped on it. And so, like I said, I think, I think you are going to see a little bit more of a presence for us doing traffic stops. So.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah. And I am fairly certain I heard Lieutenant Bodorf down here early, early one morning running traffic.
Yeah, he, he, it looks like he did a, a school zone one because that was some of the concerns that they brought up. So.
Great. Thank you very much. Have anything else for us? Nope. Okay. Counsel, I'll ask you if you have any other questions? No?
I appreciate you guys.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. I know we need one of you guys to stick around a little longer.
If the sheriff's, uh, looks like he's in the middle of something, so I can stick.
I will absolutely stick around. That's no problem whatsoever.
Okay. All right. We appreciate both of you being here. Thank you.
You can flip a coin, right?
Right. Okay. All right. Mr. Schultz, you want to come on up? We can talk to us about water and wastewater.
Mark was sitting up front. I figured he'd do all the talking. All right. So let's start on the wastewater side. So we are we are not in compliance yet, but the parts have been ordered. Coming in by the time we shut off discharge.
Standard well.
The after.
Well, we're shut down now, but usually.
Right. And so we won't discharge again until November. When we do, we will be fully back to where we should be before discharging, which we haven't been doing for quite some time. And a few other changes we've been making and process changes, along with Mark getting certified. So there's a backup, which is also required by the state. So that is a that is looking very good on the wastewater side that we can get back to being defensible on what we need to do. We have a lot of projects this summer that we will coordinate both cities with to get done. We need to do a lagoon leak test to make sure that the lagoons aren't leaching anything out because of their age. We also need to do another sludge depth survey. When the, when the, when the NPDS permit was redone a couple of years ago, two years ago, they put an odd requirement in there that a sludge survey would be done every year on the ponds. So have you, have you might have seen in some Miami communications with the state that they're gonna look at that. Because I said, I point out that it's highly odd. Normally it's done in one permit cycle. Each permit's good for five years. The renewal is about seven to ten by the time they get it done. And ponds don't tend to build up sludge that way. And there's a lot of operational techniques that you can do that to reduce that sludge without actually having to dredge the ponds and land irrigate somewhere, which is a whole nother issue now with the introductions of the PFOS and PFAS forever chemicals that have now been included in Circlia as hazardous chemicals, where that can settle out in that, the bomb of your ponds. Then you need to land apply this or get rid of it some other way. You cannot then, because of the PFAS being listed under Circlia, you can't create a hazardous waste site by putting down a farmer's field like they used to do back when, which was just the way of doing it. And so wait a minute, all you've done is move the problem. So
Right.
There are a lot of regulations being looked at federally because the initial response by states was make the wastewater facilities have to deal with this. And the question is, well, this is in waterproof rain gear. They found it in household dust. They've, you know, it's on law products that we've been living with for a long time. Why is the end user being required to deal with it and not the people who are manufacturing and sending it out? So there's a lot of fight against, you know, where that's going anyway. And then we also need to do an outfall inspection, which we'll get, we'll do that while we're doing the rest. It's just kind of part of our process during the summer to, to make it look good. So like I said, by the time we got this done, which is a lot for small communities, by the end of the summer here, by September, we'll be right in line with the wastewater and with our permit.
Thank you.
Nice.
Thank you for having me.
Now let's get to the water. Tried to lift you up a little. So as I mentioned, Mark, Monroe's been selected. On the water side, it'll be testing for PFAS chemicals. The state will be in the source water to see what's dribbling down into the long time and then down the river. And the state will come and do the initial sampling. This is happening for all small communities. It never used to be a requirement for cities under thirty-three hundred people. And they decided to move forward and have all the small communities do it. Federal grant takes care of the first sampling and the initial repeat sampling. Told Mark, make sure he's, he's there. I'll get that coordinated lined up. When they go to do it, that way he can come back and do the repeat sample that comes six months later and follow, make sure he follows their procedures. We've already went through in Harrisburg by having different people do it who didn't follow the procedures. We ended up taking it five times because it wasn't quite exactly documented the way they wanted it done, even though it reported none found. Anyway, but that was, that was pretty eye-opening to how picky this needs to be. But we were on wells, so I thought it was odd that Harrisburg got selected in that last round anyway, especially with how deep our wells are. So I'll give you the paperwork on that so you can.
Where the sampling points at, if you don't mind me asking?
This sampling point will be a raw sampling point. So it'll be right before it enters the treatment plant.
Right there, that structure that sits out over there.
And depending on when the intake is doing its job, we'll work around that as, as we need to with the sampler when he's coming down to do that work for the state. Tried to organize this. Whole bunch of stuff in just today. So. So we've I've been doing a lot. I, I don't know what's in your pocket or what was shared with you. But we did get all the programming done at the water side that the state required in this few months, long, you know, you guys are doing this all wrong. Stop doing that.
And of course.
Mark's done an excellent job of getting more familiar and being able to make those judgmental decisions that need to be made rather than just following along like the puppy dog that he was kind of. And it's kind of where the position he was put in. So he was, he knew how to do that task, but not what was recognizing what was creating this. So he's doing real well doing that. But anyway, the sets and the ranges and everything got in, we sent pictures and all the documentation into the state. And March thirty-first, I don't know if this was shared with you either, the letter came to me, Dear Chuck, our officer received confirmation the above project was completed. The membrane molecule replacement for the systems. And the conditions have now been met for the project that was done on December eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, just by getting it programmed and putting all that in. And I love this next line, "This verification completes the plan review requirements and the final approval is issued at this time, and the facility is now approved for use." We can now turn it on, make water.
No. Nice. Thank you. Officially.
Really like that the state's paying.
Congratulations, boy. Okay.
This last month, we also submitted the last five years of the Cross Connection Backflow Annual Report that had not been done. So we got all those in. And oddly enough, I have not heard a single word back from you.
That's a good thing, right?
I'm not sure. There was only one person doing that. And I see that as of last year, that's not, that person's no longer in that role. I don't know if it's been filled. I don't, but I have responses back from the state that yes, we have received.
Okay, that's good.
So it's all in, plus this year's. So
Thank you.
We're back on time for that. We just did the Consumer Confidence Report and sent that out. It was posted on, on the city's website. Pretty sure we, I think we shocked the, the compliance, our compliance officer, who really does not like Monroe. There's just no way around it. He's just been given the middle finger by Monroe long enough that he's, that's the way it feels.
For more than the last five years or just the last five years, do you feel?
The, the last five years.
Got it.
So, and well, he hasn't been on for all five years. So, but he's been on.
He's inherited, I'm sure, some things.
And so in, you know, it's only been required for these, these CCRs to be out to the public in the last twenty, twenty-five years. Called, and I've never, ever seen, ever, even with all the cities that I've DRC'd or ran, a compliance officer corrected or make a suggestion for correction. It's just a little wording switch. That's how much he is paying attention to every single thing Monroe does.
Wow, that's not good. No.
Really don't want to be on that radar that bad what Monroe is. We made a quick change, got it to Dawn, got it changed, got it reposted, sent back another copy, sent a copy up to the state. And they also said, yes, okay, we got it now. And so one more thing done before the due date in May, which has to be some brownie points somewhere along the way. You know, we can claim it, whether it holds true or not, I don't know. But that's, but that's a real good thing that we're moving along. Mentioned Harney County and the issues they have. This council's probably unaware because I've been doing it about eight years. When, or three city administrators. I go, I am the eight-one-one Lynn Benton Utility Coordinating Council Standards Chair. And I represent Harrisburg and Monroe at those meetings along with the local emergency planning committee that I'm also on, representing Monroe and Harrisburg for a long time now.
Thank you.
So any information that comes up from those meetings, I passed along. Whether you got there or not, I have no idea.
Probably not, but thank you for letting us know.
For instance, the local emergency planning, we understand. And most people who are involved in emergency planning understands that the immediate reaction and the general public doesn't understand this, but the immediate reaction and initial steps come local. And I mean immediately local. Because we're the ones here. And then you're gonna get some county and eventually some state. FEMA will show up in a year or two or whenever they feel like it. I mean, it's really, they expect everybody else to show up first, but that's not how it works. So that's why we have these local committees made up of, of these, the towns and those who have the means and the equipment. And we have signed documentation with other cities to work together. If we have an incident, kind of like they did in Harney County, they put out the emergency notice to all the cities that are listed in the state and said, hey, we need this. We need, they called for four dump trucks and drivers and whatever. And cities responded. That's how you, we go back and forth on that. A lot of water municipalities, we have the same setup. We have the same setup with ODOT, with all these cities involved. If there is an emergency, small cities like us are not on our own. We have ways to call in help and it can get there pretty quick.
That's great.
It's not something that keep you up at night, keeps me up at night because I'm always working those what-if scenarios. The foreman that I have hired who's working for me now, worked for me a long time, actually went over to Burns and Harney County and worked for them for a few years. And he came back, he came over here and I rehired him as my foreman. And he was the foreman over there about nine months. So there for, you know, because of the flooding issues and, and they discussed that. And, and it was pretty open and they didn't take some actions. But just looking at how bad it was with the flooding and the potentials, because like their city wells are not chlorinated. And they were all underwater. If they have any surface water leaking, any intrusion, they have bigger issues than they can handle themselves. You know, when the county seat is only twice as big as Monroe. I mean, there's only nineteen hundred people there. So it's, you know, and they called in that help and it's always available. And people can, can get out there and chase down off when they're not having the issue. So I think that's about it. Other than we really need to set up either a special counseling or ad hoc committee. We have to make some decisions on this treatment.
Okay. How soon?
Couple of years ago?
Yeah.
Yes, unfortunately, you know, that's where we've, that's where it got falling off. When, when it came back and the state said there was money and then, you know, the document had to be signed and turned in and approved by the council that just didn't go that way.
Did it come to council at any point?
I have no idea.
I don't.
I don't.
It doesn't sound familiar.
I think.
No.
Yeah.
I have no idea. I don't have access to the city computers, no one. So
Next week.
No matter what, whether.
Next week. Okay.
Yeah. And that's, that's definitely possible. On some days.
Later this week, maybe? You want to go as soon as later this week?
I don't have much time this week.
Okay.
I got a lot of mains this week.
And I need to do digging to find all the paperwork and make sure that I have anything he might need.
And we have some, and we have some emails back from the engineer who was working on it.
Right.
Saying this is what was sent back to the city in two thousand twenty-three. I need to answer these four questions to move on.
Okay.
Okay.
It doesn't really matter what's happened on the funding side. Partial funding that they said that we could get from our resources that was set aside in the state's budget by any of which they said they may be able to move on into the next budget. But with the way budgeting works, it doesn't always work that way. It doesn't matter. We still have to address the water treatment plant. It is in violation.
Right.
We can't wait until some grant magically goes, says, yes, you must do this now. No, really nasty decisions need to be made on how this is going to move forward. And nobody's gonna like it. And unfortunately, it's gonna be twice as bad than it should have been if it was just handled two years ago. So yeah, that's, that's where we're at on the water side. Plant wise, Cruz doing a great job. Like I said, Mark's picking up a whole lot of stuff. We've got, we talked about the last main, how we only had one F, one waste pump. We only had, those are all working. We need to work on our screening system. I'll probably be over, probably tomorrow. It's the only day I have this week. And we'll make the list for this month of stuff we need to work on in the plant and keep moving forward on that. The stuff that we can handle together and get some of, getting some of that done.
Thanks for giving Mark more opportunity to develop and have discretion.
Oh, he's gonna be one of the tops and.
Nice.
I was at a conference recently and I was given a, a class. And somewhere along the way, even though I still have a long ways to retirement, I became like the old guy in the class. And I've been doing this so long and giving certain classes now, I'm like, wait a minute, you know, this is not the career choice I had actually picked. And all of a sudden now I'm the one people were asking. And we're talking afterwards with some of the the other instructors from OAWU and AWWA and APWA all the more. That there's, you know, a good third of the operators in the state that have sat through my classes that I've worked to help get certified. And so, yeah, it's just, you know, it's a little mind-boggling when I look at these young guys going, geez, where did this? But that's the way it is. And Mark has all the potential to do it. Mark is right up there with one of the, some of the better dedicated employees I've seen to their employer that you don't usually find. And no matter how much money I keep throwing at him, he doesn't want to come over and work for me.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Mark.
He does a great job, an absolute great job. So.
There is, at one point, there was something, you have to just bear with me because I was just writing notes with the panel in the water plant and we needed an electrical engineer that come, did that get handled?
Yes.
You guys are amazing. Okay. And also.
Mark did the perfect thing. You know, we got an electrician come in there, threw all the breakers, turned it back on, everything works fine. So.
Perfect. Also. Perfect. Also, there was an issue and I think it has to do with some of the funding coming up and stuff where we needed to have an engineer of record. Is that right?
Yeah, we're gonna talk about that.
Oh, and that's on there, so never mind. Oh, shut up. Go ahead. You're done.
Well, can we talk about when, when that next meeting is gonna occur? Since you're here, Chuck, that ad hoc meeting or whatever.
However, you guys want to set that up?
Well, it's a meeting where you wanna, you want us to make decisions. So it has to be a special city council meeting, it sounds like.
I would think that, that, I would think to avoid having multiple meetings and that's my personal thought on having all the committees that small towns tend to have, tend to have too many of those, too many headlocks, so. In small cities, the entire city council needs to go, know what's going on, be able to make a, a choice on them. And I think that's, it should be a work session.
Yep.
To give an idea of, we need to respond back to the engineers that were working on that and get them to work with the city of, in the engineer city of record. To, because they will actually check this outside engineers to make sure it meets one of these piles, these regulations that the state's requiring.
Are there any days in the first week of May that would not work for you or anybody here in the room? I know you don't have your calendar in front of you, so it's probably hard to tell.
Thursday is out. The eighth, we're having all the high school come down to our new park and we're going to put in trails and everything else. So on the eighth, I am not available.
Okay.
And I will be driving a backhoe most of that day.
That's a difficult week for me, so the earlier in the week, the better. Same, I can't do that week.
I think we're.
Session on the twelfth anyways.
Yeah, that's also the, I think we also have the budget public hearing there too.
Yeah.
Two meetings.
I mean. Stick around a little bit longer. We can do it then. Uh, there's also the thirteenth. I don't know if that works for anybody or not.
Not for me.
Okay.
I'm already booked.
Okay, well, that's fine. Nineteenth. The Monday.
Nineteenth.
Can do that.
What about you, Chuck?
I don't know. I, I think that's my budget meeting.
Okay.
Just offhand, I don't have my calendar.
Right.
I am back.
I'm kind of old school. I
Want to maybe look around there and send us a couple of choices and then you want to email them out?
Yeah, that's fine.
That might be our best thing. I know I said it, shut up. I lied. I have one more thing. Don't we, were we planning on still doing a walkthrough on the thirtieth?
Well, we had on the calendar, Chuck, are you still available on the thirtieth? Are you about?
That's Wednesday night, right?
Yep.
Correct. Yes.
Okay, sorry.
I'll be back from Salem, so yes.
Okay. It's at six o'clock.
Twenty-eighth?
Uh, thirtieth.
Wednesday.
This week.
Oh, this week, okay. I'm looking at May.
Yeah. And I'm looking at May too because I'm like taking the last three weeks off in May.
I hope you're going somewhere.
That's what I'm thinking. Might be taking a road, just loading the suitcase and drive.
Mark, are you gonna be around on the thirtieth?
Okay. I'm on PTO today and tomorrow and I'm working both days here.
Getting pump days out of it? So what's, what this is for is because with the amount of money that needs to be spent, it's much easier to correlate something where you've seen it to, to understand why we're doing that rather than just, you know, this is what.
Six o'clock on?
Correct, at the water plant. Be there, be square.
Make a decision in a meeting without having all that backup.
And then Chuck, do you need any other paperwork for the before we have that meeting that I might be able to find that you want me to look for?
No, I think. I don't think so.
Okay.
We have a rough outline from the engineer, what was planned.
Okay.
Um, I have some concerns over what was planned based on that engineer or that firm. But and mainly because a lot of that was a very platinum package. That's not what we need.
Right.
Okay. We need a regulatory package to get, get through this. I mean, so. And having an engineer of record will help do that because they will be able to look at that set of plans with some value engineering and go, okay, yeah, that's nice, but this is, this is not what we need spec'd out here. We can use these other alternative ways to do it. It's still work, but they don't have the, the, you know, Denali package stamp on the side of it.
Right.
Is some of this gonna be kind of incorporated when they do the levy removal or, I mean, is it gonna? No, totally separate.
Okay.
So the intake is being done. Separate, but I, well, I was kind of going, well, the reason why I asked, I was kind of going through his, reading his stuff today on that and I noticed they said they were gonna plan on putting some new VF, variable frequency drive motors in. So that's why I was curious because I know that probably do some electrical and.
Yeah, like for VFDs on the intake?
Yeah, so they'll have to probably put into buses or something for the VFDs. And so that's why I was wondering if they were gonna incorporate some of that with our electrical work that we might need in our building, so. So let's take a special drive, so obviously. Absolutely. And, you know, I, without seeing the, without seeing the specifications on that, whether they're, they're really talking VFDs or a soft start or what they're talking, because a VFD on an intake just doesn't make a whole lot of sense. I just, I'd say, I read and it said they were gonna do VFDs, but yeah, you can always put a soft start on your buses or your. Yeah. It seems like an overkill, but. I'm not sure where they were going that route, but. That's, yeah, me neither, but a separate project that I've done. That's why I was making sure it's not gonna interfere or if maybe it would help or I don't know.
Yeah.
We need to make sure, you know.
Are we having problems with couplings or spikes and, and average on the motors? And what would be the reason for the soft start or the VFD?
Don't know why he's got it on there, but that's. Yeah, I, you know, if you really want me to come up with something, I'm sure I can throw something out there.
Engineer, that's why I was asked.
Depends on how big a pumps you're dealing with too, I guess, too, so. It's like, you know, you wouldn't have a, an initial water hammer into the system.
Well, that would be part of it.
But, you know, a clay valve can do the same thing and modify and, and stop that. Yeah, I, I, I don't understand, but.
Any expansion joints built into that system at all? By, typing expansion joint?
I haven't seen any plans. I've only read an overview of what they're doing on an intake.
Because that'll take some of the hammer out too. If you put a, a Bellows type expansion joint.
To a certain extent. I've seen them go. For, you know, if we stayed with a membrane, it wouldn't really matter on the membrane anyway. So, because we're not looking at a pressure filter. It's an open top system, which you'll see during, if you haven't seen it.
I haven't, no.
Yeah, but I mean, we could, we could do electrical soft starts or mechanical soft starts, either way, if we really need to do it.
I was just, yeah, I was just curious because I was reading some of the paperwork today, so. Yeah, again, this is all what we need to break down and have an idea of where we're going. That way we can feed the information back to the engineer that was hired. And then, again, with an engineer of record, we can have them do the value engineering on that. Moving forward and then give us other suggestions. We see this, this and this as ways to make this work for that. So.
Sounds great. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thanks, sir.
Yep, appreciate it.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and give the City of Monroe report. I'm gonna read it because I typed it up, so just letting you guys know what's been going on and there's been a lot. So, exciting on April first, no fooling. The council approved the two-point-five percent COLA for all city employees. It was retroactive to January first. That went into effect. Also, the council had approved temporary and permanent pay increases for the city employees that were retroactive to March third. Those also went into effect. The finance and personnel committee has asked city staff to track their daily tasks and uh, how much time they spend just to get an idea of what all is being accomplished now that we don't have a city administrator. As far as we can tell, and Mark and Dawn can correct me if I'm wrong here, it looks like you guys are spending roughly eight to ten hours a week on additional tasks that you weren't doing before, roughly.
It really depends on the week. I know for myself, I think it was a week after the budget meeting, I spent a ton of time doing things I wouldn't normally do. Otherwise, I, I don't count everything either. So, for example, I pack it for tonight, but even though that's not something I typically do, it didn't take long enough to really justify counting it. There was one week where it was thirteen hours and this week I only anticipate working three or four hours.
Okay, it's kind of fluctuating for you.
Average is out around eight to nine hours total per week, you know?
Okay.
I'm not the greatest with logging all of that to me, but I've.
Okay. Okay, let's get the microphone pointed a little closer to you so they can, we can hear you. I'm, I'm getting complaints that we can't hear you on the recording. Not yet. Okay, so later on in this meeting, the, the council will consider a recommendation from the finance and personnel committee uh, to make one more adjustment with regard to utility one workers' pay. There was a discrepancy between the job post and the offer letter. We want to get that corrected. And then, I wanted to congratulate Chuck Cross. Tomorrow is his six-month probationary period will conclude. And then he'll be free and clear. So I want to congratulate him on that. That's a wonderful accomplishment. Um, with regard to water and wastewater, I mean, we just got done talking with Chuck, so we have a pretty good idea what's going on there for the most part. Um, on April fourth, I worked with the city attorney and I signed a settlement agreement with DEQ. This was for the lack of reporting over, I believe it was a two-year period, maybe it was longer uh, with the DEQ, uh, and this was something the former city administrator did not do. Hence the reason why we got fined for it. The fine was originally sixty-three hundred dollars. DEQ reduced it to forty-eight hundred. Um, I signed the agreement and DEQ instructed the city to pay the fine by May fifth. On the fourteenth of April, councillor Cuthbertson and I signed the check for that fine penalty, whatever we're gonna call it, and that check has been sent off to DEQ. Chuck already talked about the water consumer confidence report. That was an interesting experience. That was interesting trying to track down, we had to translate it. And so I, I had a tool that I could use that made that happen fairly quickly. And it was very exciting to get this in before the deadline. So shocking them. I like that. We can keep. Yes, please. It was a lot. Right. Yeah, I, I don't see the reason why we need to have all the paper, to be honest.
We should borrow Chuck's.
Yes, absolutely agree with that. So I'm a hundred percent on board with that. Uh, and then Chuck has touched on the engineer record. So Chuck, you've talked with branch engineering and they're willing to do a contract extension. We did have an agreement with them that expired some time ago. So it's exciting that they're willing to circle back with us and, and do a contract extension. I signed the agreement on Friday. I think we need to get that over to the city attorney and have her sign it. And then I don't, go ahead and get it back to you, sir. The, yes, okay. 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 Okay, I will make. Okay, I'll make sure the city attorney gets it and signs it as soon as possible.
And Chuck, you have a question on that. So I did sign, you know, you kind of suggested maybe only one uh, council member sign it. So I did sign it as a city representative. Now Chuck, do you feel that that's going to be an issue?
That isn't them.
Okay, good.
All right, cool, thank you. Uh, let's see here, moving on to like the planning commission and land use planning. We actually had a planning commission work session on April eighth. Planning commission was there, our new city planner, Michael Bidwell was there. Uh, the city manager for Filomath, Chris Workman was there. Mark was there, our DLCD specialist, Patrick Wingard was there. We had several guests and developers that were there as well. Uh, I thought it was a really good meeting. We talked about all the developments that are going on. There are currently eleven planning projects in various stages right now. Uh, so it's, you can see why it's a little bit crazy and I'm pulling my hair out. So I'm very happy that we're able to sign that agreement with Filomath. Uh, Michael's been out sick, so hopefully we'll get to see him here. Hopefully he's getting well and we'll get to see him soon to continue moving forward and making progress there. Tonight, I, later on in the agenda, I'm gonna ask of possibly doing a technical grant via DLCD to help the city with development code. Our development code is out of date. Um, I think we need to also consider proposed amendments that were in the Riverside District Master Plan. I don't believe that those got rolled into our development code. And I believe that we need some help and I think the technical grant could be useful. So, um, I wanted to chat a little bit about that. Um, we also need to look at our fee schedule as well as forms and applications. We are missing some. We need to update some and we need to look at fees. Because we need to be, for any of our planning fees, in my opinion, if we have a fee, we need to be able to charge for and cover our costs.
Just create a fee schedule last year in a bunch of forms.
We did, but I don't think, I don't know that the planning fees are on it or.
Oh.
And I don't even know if they're even up to date, so we need to take a look. Yeah, I had, I had a feeling.
We shouldn't be. It's not up to us to pay those fees. And so as a city, we need to, that's, we gotta stop that.
Yeah.
Yeah, agreed. Uh, moving on to the library, we were all here on April fourteenth when the council held a public hearing on the deposition of the Monroe Community Library. And we discussed transition of the ownership of the library from the city to SBCEA. Uh, after that public hearing, all the counselors did vote to transition the ownership of the library. I went ahead with Roger Irvin, he was the SBCEA president on the next day, which was April fifteenth, and signed the quick clean, quick claim deed and Dawn was the notary on that, so she was present for that. Unfortunately, minor little detail, uh, that quick claim deed, the partition plat number was slightly incorrect. So Benton Kelly, they pushed it back to us and we corrected it and I signed and updated quick claim deed. Uh, this was on the twenty-third of this month, so that's fixed now. Never a dull moment, I swear. Um, I've been invited to the library for an event on May seventeenth. Uh, regarding, this is celebrating the library's transition in this new beginning with the building and all of that. So I'm invited to that. I'll, I'll go to that as well.
Sorry, what are the details with that? I'd like to attend that as possible.
No, it, there is a Facebook event. And I don't have a lot of details. I was just invited, but anybody in the room can go. I think anybody at public can go to, so.
Cool.
I'm hoping they won't make me speak or something, so we'll see. IT and the website. So on March twenty-eighth, so Dave, we call him Dave, the IT guy. Uh, he discovered that our shared drive, which stores all of our city documentation, including everything that both Dawn and Gobby need to do their jobs on a daily basis, stopped working. The motor had burned out on the device. Our documentation was successfully recovered from the device. I went ahead and I authorized Dave to purchase a new network attached storage device, shared drive if you will. It has a mirror drive with it, so we can avoid this problem again of the drive going down or the motor burning out. We have a mirror drive, a backup basically. So he was able to successfully install it, restore the files, get the security on it, uh, by probably about April ninth. Uh, I know during the same timeframe, Mark, you were having problems with the, the system over at the water treatment plant. I don't know if.
It was just a bad router.
Okay, so that, that was resolved, correct? Okay, so it's like I swear these things all happen at the same time in a cluster. Uh, so then on April twenty-first, Dave and I discussed very slow internet speeds at City Hall and the public workshop. I mean, we're talking, I think I could probably walk home faster than the speeds at City Hall. So he looked into the hardware security appliance that was at City Hall and he found that that appliance was thirteen years old and it's no longer supported by Cisco. Dave also did some more research and found the appliance could be part of the slow internet speed issue. So I authorized Dave to purchase a new hardware security appliance and a wifi router. And so yesterday, he actually, I let him into City Hall and he worked the afternoon. Installed the new appliance and the router. The speeds are much faster now at City Hall. Uh he did recommend that we talk to Monroe Telephone Company, because it seemed like there was still a limitation of the signal coming in to City Hall. Dawn actually talked to Monroe Tel today and speeds are significantly much, much better there now. So.
We went from fifty. Go ahead, Brian.
No, go ahead, Dawn. I was I was pulling up the email you sent earlier.
Oh, I think you were looking at.
Fifty download and ten upload to two hundred and fifty something download and I want to say it was a hundred and something uploads, a way more.
Yeah, download speed was five to six times faster now. Upload speed is eight to nine times faster than before. So that that's huge. Uh the website, I will admit, it's kind of fallen down the list of priorities and I apologize, but there have been so many other fires to put out and deal with. I'll push it back up. Uh we are, I we're having a little bit of an issue with GoDaddy right now, which anyway. Oh, I we will work with them and the website consultant will work together and we'll get it figured out. Um and so we can get this thing moved to the new website as soon as possible. So I'll keep you guys informed of that. Um let's see here, on April seventh, Mark was there for that lovely event. Uh the former CA came by and he picked up all of his personal items from City Hall. Uh he also, I had the former CA sign an inventory list of all the personal items that he took home, including his desk. In addition, the former CA paid for personal charges on the city credit card. He asked me to sign a Medicare document for the uh for his to confirm his employment hours with the city. Uh also, we reminded the former CA to cash his final check. Dawn, has he cashed his final check yet?
No, he has not as of today that I have seen. The bank every day, so.
All right, thank you. Okay, so I don't know what's going on there. I leave it at that. Um on April seventeenth, Gobby submitted her resignation. I was sad to receive it. Uh but I understood why and I accepted it. Her last day is actually April thirtieth. And then later in this meeting, we'll also discuss finance and personnel committees recommendations to move forward with hiring, interviewing and hiring people. We we have a couple gaps now. We needed, we need to move forward and deal with it. And then I, just so you all know, I am continuing to approve paperwork at City Hall. Fund transfers, PL requests, overtime payroll adjustments. I go in almost every day um to sign paperwork and just to make sure everybody's okay. Um or if they need to talk to me, you can talk to me too. I don't bite for the most part. Um I am making some decisions, but anything that's big, that has a huge impact on the budget and time and availability of city staff, uh I make sure to bring those to you. So the city council. Lastly, I've got the city attorney work. So um the charter spectrum fran- franchise agreement that is in progress. We have a draft agreement right now uh that myself and I don't know who at city staff, we're gonna, it's an internal document at this point. Uh we were instructed not to share it publicly or with the council quite yet. So we need to discuss it, see the terms of it, ask any questions, provide any uh input with the attorney. And then we can finalize that and then I can bring it to you and have you look at it. I'm gonna have the attorney also, I did mention this to her last month. Uh the property at one eighty North Eighth Street. Um we we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to get legal on it, I'm afraid. Um that property needs to be condemned, and I did not realize there is an outstanding water bill on it for twenty seven hundred dollars.
This is the one over uh that has i- it's the old decrepit house that people were like digging around in, looking for a historic book or something.
I I had no idea that there was an outstanding water balance, water bill balance on it. Dawn showed it to me last week, so we need to get this squared away, so. Uh probably, but I need to see, we don't, the ownership of the house is in question and it has been for a long time.
Yeah.
So we gotta sort that piece out before.
Name on the deed, the lady that owns it passed away in the nineties, left it with her son. He passed away in the early two thousands. He left it with a spouse. She passed away a year or two ago and.
No idea.
There was a gentleman who thought he owned it because he paid off back taxes and that was a whole event, but.
Right. Yeah, not quite. So yeah, we need to get that sorted out, so let's. Um the only other thing I have on here is I'm hoping amongst all of this angst that we can plan something fun, like a barbecue or something. So that's it for the city report. Sorry it was so long, but there's been a lot going on.
We have a barbecue. Mr. Murray needs to bring the puppy.
I'll bring him. He's not a puppy anymore. He went to the vet today. He's a hundred seventeen pounds.
I get in trouble for my dogs getting too fat.
All right, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. So the following items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. In which case, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. If any inv- item involves a potential conflict of interest, council members should so note before adoption of the consent agenda. A motion to accept the consent agenda is appropriate. So that should be in your packet for you.
And there was uh additional stuff because uh Phil's just paid, is that part of it too?
Um we need to ask Dawn that. Dawn, you've got a lot of interesting things for me here.
So there should be four separate APs that were kind of thrown in after I had done our AP reporting. Um the ones you have signed off on, so.
Oh, yep, I see there's five.
I'm I'm disclosing this to you so you know everything that we have. Included in the original reports, that's what those are.
Okay, got it.
One that I have that isn't signed.
That was one we got today and Mayor Dan was not able to make it in this afternoon to sign it before I included it in the packet, but it's still gonna be paid with this round, so.
Yeah, the this is the for the uh contract planner from Philomath. So, yeah, I didn't get.
You're signing that before the checks go out, so that will be standard procedure on my end.
We'll we'll put a demerit against Dan.
I was going to the pharmacy to get a prescription for my daughter.
Sorry.
Um.
Whatever.
What is the bank analysis? Is that something we typically do or is that something we had to do extra?
So the bank analysis, which which document are you looking at? Oh, I see. So, so.
AP's paid, AP's outstanding, the treasurer's report, and then kind of a preliminary um view of what payroll will look like.
So councillor Cuthbertson had a question about the um the AP, I guess, here that's bank analysis activity for three twenty twenty.
That's every month. That's just a standard UMCW fee that's charged each month.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's actually the only resolution that was passed um for one of some of the ACH payments that happen every month.
Right, okay, gotcha, gotcha. That makes sense.
Okay. Yeah, okay, so there's that. The treasurer's report, okay.
And the amount you see for HAWK is the um part that we needed for the wastewater treatment plant, I believe.
You're talking about the negative available balance?
Um no, so the HAWK invoice that you see on the AP, just because H A C H is how it's spelled. Um that's, I think, around eleven thousand dollars, just so you're not shocked when you see that one on there.
I have a feeling Chuck will be shocking us with more stuff later, so. I'm guessing. There's the minutes. And you all have minutes as well in your packets. Making sure. No?
They should have them, I think, eleven pages long.
Yeah, I know. I remember reading them. You got them. Okay, good. If you don't, I've got a copy.
Very good. It's pretty much the back.
Jelly in the back. Oh, it is.
Okay.
Oh geez, sorry.
No, you're fine. Better to add. I believe you share it, it's okay. Whenever you're ready, I'm ready to hear.
Motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Well, would you like to second that?
I'll second.
Great, thank you. Let me know when you guys are ready. I'm good. Councillor, you ready? Councillor Lindner, are you ready? Okay, Councillor Williams, okay. I'm getting nods from everybody else. Okay. So we're gonna go ahead and vote. Councillor Ray.
Yes.
Councillor Lindner.
I wasn't here for this meeting and you guys have a quorum, so I'm just gonna abstain.
Okay, that's fine. Councillor Williams.
Yes.
Councillor Cuthbertson.
Yes.
Councillor Myers.
Yes.
Okay, very good. All right, let's move on, guys. Okay, so next up on the agenda, resolution twenty twenty five dash nineteen. A resolution authorizing the return of funds to the Water SDC Fund. That resolution should be in your package. Yes, correct. Twenty twenty five dash nineteen. More specifically, a resolution returning funds for a water system improvement project at the city reservoir to the Water SDC Reserve Fund.
Oh, were these the funds that were incorrectly allocated and then we're just.
That is correct, yes. So Chuck informed us that that was not the appropriate action to take, so we need to reverse it. Do we need to read the resolution or is everybody okay just reading it? Okay. Let me know if you have any questions or if you want to ask Chuck any questions, we can do that too.
I'll make a motion that we accept resolution number twenty twenty five dash nineteen. A resolution returning funds for a water system improvement project at the city reservoir to the Water SDC Reserve Fund.
I'll second.
Okay. Any comments, questions before we vote? No? Are we ready to vote? Councillor Williams, are you ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay. Hey, councillor Myers.
Yes.
Councillor Cuthbertson.
Yes.
Councillor Williams.
Yes.
Councillor Lindner.
Yes.
Councillor Ray.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, all right, let's move on to resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty, a resolution authorizing law, authorizing law enforcement patrol services by the Benton County Sheriff's Office. And it's actually for fiscal year twenty five to twenty seven. The engine, the agenda has got a minor typo. So it's fiscal year twenty five to twenty seven. And the sheriff is back on, so we've got questions. We've got them.
You said that there was a typo that was supposed to be to twenty seven?
Yeah, it's on the agenda. It's supposed to be twenty five to twenty seven. Yeah, the the actual resolution itself is fine. It's just the agenda that's incorrect. No, no, you're fine. And there is an exhibit A attached to this resolution that has the IGA with Benton County Sheriff's Office. There will be an increase. We've, I think we've talked about that a little bit. Like everything else, things cost more. And Dawn, we have this uh increase uh in the budget, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Perfect. I just want to make sure it's on the record. Yep.
Around the ten percent mark.
Yep. Yep. Okay. Any questions for the sheriff? He's been, he's been patiently waiting for this very moment.
The dogs are happy here at this dog park, so we're good.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution number twenty twenty five dash twenty. A resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Monroe and the Benton County Sheriff's Office for law enforcement patrol services for fiscal year twenty twenty five to twenty twenty seven.
Second.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, comments, questions? No? Okay, we're ready to vote?
Yes.
Yes. Haven't asked you yet, but okay. I'm gonna start with councillor Ray. Councillor Lindner.
Yes.
Councillor Williams.
Yes.
Councillor Cuthbertson.
Yes.
Councillor Myers.
Yes.
There we go. Thank you. I know. There you go, sheriff. We're good to go.
I appreciate everybody's support and of course, as always, if you need anything, make make my phone ring.
Thank you, sir. Have a good evening.
Have a good night. Thank you very much.
Me too. Great. My next mayor?
Uh hold on one sec. One second. Ah, yes. Let me, I know she she's ready. I know she's ready. Okay, let me read it though. Okay, next on the agenda is resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty one. This is a resolution adopting compensation for the Monroe mayor. Yes, councillor, you may go.
All right.
All right.
Um so as you heard tonight earlier, uh the mayor is doing a lot of things that normally a mayor would not do in the absence of a formal city administrator. And um in speaking with a few people around the community and looking into what mayors and other towns of varying sizes uh earn, I guess, is compensation. Um I am making a recommendation to council tonight to provide mayor sheets with a stipend for the work that he is doing in the absence of a city administrator and um that might, that amount might be reduced once we hire a city administrator. But I do think that we should keep a a stipend in place because our mayor does do a lot of things and yeah.
And it actually, it's in the resolution that once there is a city administrator hired, city council should reevaluate it.
Yeah.
So, yes, a hundred percent agree.
So that's the summary and I will let everybody read the resolution.
Yeah, I know the kind of work you have to do for this, so.
Yeah.
And if it does help, I did plan that into the budget as well.
Yep. I'm gonna make a motion that we adopt resolution number twenty twenty five dash twenty one. A resolution adopting compensation for the Monroe mayor and it's well deserved.
Hold it, a second, if I can do that?
You can, of course.
As the chair of that committee, I'm not sure if I can.
Of course you can. Comments, questions?
I just wanna make sure, I'm, wanna be very clear, I'm totally for this. However, I wanna make sure that did we check our charter and all the different things and ethics and whatnot to make sure that by doing this, we're not gonna have mayor in trouble or any other issues by doing this.
I did not check the charter. The mayor would not be accepting funds from, I mean, if, if you're thinking of like the, the annual report that we have to sign or file online, that's a totally different thing. For example, the governor, the mayor of Corvallis earns a stipend each month.
Right, I just don't know how our charter is set up and I just wanna make sure that legally, we're not getting into muddy water where we're gonna have an issue later because that would, that would break my heart. I mean, I, I'm not saying you don't.
Yeah.
Do you want us to amend it to say upon review of the chart?
Yeah, that's fine.
Just to make sure, just because I don't want anybody to get, you know, but I completely support it, I don't wanna sound like I'm not supporting, but I also wanna make sure that we're not.
I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution number 2025-21. A resolution adopting compensation for the Monroe Mayor pending review of the city charter.
To determine whether it's allowed.
Yeah, to determine any incongruencies.
That sounds good.
Thank you.
Want to go ahead and second it again?
I will second.
Okay, all right, just making sure. All right, any other comments or questions? No, okay, we ready to vote?
Yep.
Okay, Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Cuthbertson? Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Lindner?
Yes.
Counselor Ray?
Yes.
Thank you.
And just as a side note, counselors in the city of Eugene get paid 800 a month. And that was 10 years ago.
Wow.
It's crazy.
We can't do that.
No.
But I was just saying, it's not an uncommon thing.
No, it's not.
Oh, no, it's not. I just wanna make sure, like I said, that we're, we're legal in how we're doing it.
And every charter is different, so who knows, ours could say we can't do it, so we'll look into it.
Yeah, right, I just wanna make sure that we're not getting into hot water anywhere.
And I appreciate that.
Oh!
That could work.
Well, except he has a full-time job.
He's still managing this.
Okay, interesting. Yeah. I, I don't think we need to go there. I really don't.
I know, it sounds scary, but it is an option, so. Always good to explore your options.
Mayor will lose his.
My wife is already questioning my decision, so anyway. Anyway, okay. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on to resolution 2025-22. This is a resolution adjusting the pay range of public works utility worker one. And I hand it back over to Counselor Lindner.
Yeah, thank you, so, um, at a recent work session, I think it was, we talked about adjusting the pay ranges for our city staff to include a COLA that went into effect January 1st. Then we also looked at some other salary adjustments. We learned that the salary range adjustments that I'd made were based on an incorrect salary range that we found in the office and Dawn was able to find the salary range that was posted with her utility worker one's job posting when he was recruited, I think in October, Mark, do you know, September, October? So, we've made an adjustment to the correct pay range and that's what this is. So his pay will increase a little bit, but it is still per the steps that we had discussed in a recent meeting and had agreed to. The pay is slightly higher though, however, it is very deserved. He has a lot of relevant experience and we need him, so I highly recommend it. So that's the summary of resolution number 2025-22.
Well, and then his six-month probationary period is over tomorrow, so he will get another bump as well, so.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number 2025-22. A resolution adjusting the pay range for utility worker one.
Second.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Ready? Okay. Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Cuthbertson?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Lindner?
Yes, and thank you, Don, for all your help on this.
Counselor Ray?
Yes.
Great, thank you all. Okay. Okay, I will go ahead and move on. Rest of my packet is minutes and stop, okay? All right. Okay, so this is on the agenda 5.5, recommendations for the finance and personnel committee. And I hand it back off again, the Counselor Lindner.
All right, so first thing here is interview and hire city recorder slash administrative assistant. Our recommendation is to essentially combine the city recorder function and the administrative assistant function into a full-time position that would be loosely split, split, excuse me, 50/50 between those two roles. And I guess it wouldn't be full-time 40 hours, but it would be at least 32 hours a week to, wait, I'm looking at the wrong one, sorry. This would be full-time 40 hours per week and it would have a somewhat flexible schedule so that the city recorder function could be fulfilled, which would include attending our meetings. And they have, we need to have a city recorder attend our planning commission meetings and our city council meetings. They don't necessarily need to attend committee meetings, but we do need somebody to capture and, you know, summarize all of our meeting minutes. So this position would also do record keeping and document maintenance, maintain meeting minutes, handle public inquiries, elections, support the accounting specialist with accepting checks and processing them, and performing general administrative clerical support. We would like to work on this position description as soon as possible and prepare to post it as soon as possible since Gobby's last day is April 30th. And we also really need that city recorder function fulfilled, so that's my first recommendation.
You said post by the 30th?
Well, no, her la, her last day is the 30th, but we wanna move on it as soon as we can.
We're not that fast, but we'll, we'll get there.
Yeah. Do you want me to just keep cruising through these?
Yeah, let's do that and then, you know, there's questions that folks can ask questions and.
Okay.
Yep.
So then my second recommendation is to, or our second recommendation as, as a committee, is to revise the city administrator position description and prepare to post for a 32-hour per week position. It would oversee budget, compliance, grants, emergency response and disaster preparedness, present at planning commission meetings and supervise city, city staff. It will not manage the water treatment plant, but it would supervise the utility workers. It would not do city planning or perform city recorder duties. These last three things are all things that we put on a former city administrator and we want to separate that out. It will be benefits eligible and we hope that it would improve our relationship, or we, we want to improve our relationship with the next city administrator to ensure maximum transparency. We also want to be sure that we're doing annual evaluations, ensuring pay increases are happening for our staff and that kind of thing as well. A lot of things fell to the wayside as we know in the last few years. So that's the second recommendation. And the third one here is the city has some really curious salary step program that is implemented. I've never seen anything like it, I've been doing compensation for about seven years. All of our salary steps are, like the delta between each step is different. Normally, it's a consistent 3% between each step and now it's three and a half, four and a half, five and a half, six and a half for this salary range. But then a different job description salary range has something completely else, like.
Not consistent at all, yeah.
Yeah, and so there's no, there's no consistency and salary step programs are typical for organizations that have classified union staff. We don't currently have any classified union staff, so we have a lot more flexibility to just conduct market surveys and then break those surveys, the salary data into different quartiles and then offering a finalist a salary that's coincident with their experience anywhere within the range. And it also gives us more flexibility to provide larger increases if we need to. Or not, you know, we can really tie performance to pay and experience and that kind of thing, education. I, I think that a lot of our problems from the last three or four weeks, or at least a lot of my issues that I've had as I'm trying to put together pay ranges, is that our system, it's really weird. I gave the former city administrator a lot of market data, thinking he knew what to do with it and that's my bad for assuming that much. He, I don't know what he was doing with it. But I've never seen anything like it and so I would just really like to move away from a step system as long as we don't have classified staff because it does give us a lot more flexibility, give staff more headroom.
So you just work with the range and then?
Yeah, you get market minimum, yeah. Market minimum, market maximum, somebody doesn't have to start at step one, they can start at step four. Because there aren't enough steps.
Or if they have more experience.
Just the range.
Yeah.
And it's between you and the manager of what, how much.
Where you are in that range.
You can align them with like a market average or a 60th percentile. It's better for the employee, it's better for the city, there's a lot more flexibility. Any questions about that or concerns?
No, I think it's great, I, it really, it, it concerned me to have so much confusion when we were going through it last time. That, that just is really bothersome.
Yeah.
And not knowing, so I think if we can be a little more clear and concise, it's gonna, everybody's gonna be happier and plus not having the flexibility, especially with the situation we're in now and knowing we need that flexibility. Great suggestion.
So that's probably what it's September-ish.
Yeah, market data will be collected in September, October, and then salary ranges can be put together for January 1st.
Sounds like a plan to me.
Yeah, and you're, you're a union guy, I'm glad you're free.
Well, ours are, we have like 2.5, 3.5, 2.5 and then there was like a 2% one here just, but it was something that was bargained, so.
Yeah.
It's just, is what it is.
Yeah.
Of course, the 2.5 doesn't make anything up for what the last year and a half of the deficit of 10%.
Yeah, I was, I, I was telling, I was chatting with Counselor Lindner and my experience in the past is is an example, so I was, I was in IT at Symantec, so there was IT infrastructure specialist. There were senior IT infrastructure specialist and then principal. And those, oh, they all overlapped with each other and it was a huge range. I mean, I actually went and talked to the HR lady, she wouldn't tell me on the phone, she said, I have to show you. If I, you know, tell you, I'll have to kill you kind of thing, but I mean, huge range, so it's like, that gives hiring managers a lot of flexibility.
Exactly, yeah, salary ranges that have overlapping bands, it, it makes a lot of sense. You can have a really high-performing utility worker one. You know, if, if Mark is here, maybe we hire somebody who's here, maybe, I don't know. I'm just, you know, theoretically, it's just, and also our current salary step system only has six steps in it, which is.
It's limiting.
Yeah, I've never seen anything like that. Usually it's 10 to 15.
Right. You're used to a lot more like 20. Really?
Yeah, and there's no.
They're just it.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, so. Thank you for sharing the recommendations.
I think the solid guy.
They're very good recommendations, I, I think you guys did a lot of good work there.
Thank you. You're lucky you didn't have to see the messy emails I kept sending to Counselor Williams and the mayor.
That's all right.
Ugly spreadsheets, I'm very sorry.
Spreadsheets, yeah, deal spreadsheets every day. So any comments, questions, I mean, the recommendations, I think we need to actually vote on these recommendations, so.
When do we vote on them, are we, do I make a motion right now to vote on them or?
Absolutely.
I'll make a motion that we accept all the recommendations as presented by the Finance and Personnel Committee, 5.5.1, 5.5.2 and 5.5.3.
You did, thank you.
I'll enthusiastically second.
Okay. Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay.
Did we, and we know we have budget, we're good budget-wise since the, one of these is gonna be a full-time and.
Yeah.
Now, and so we think we've got that worked out.
Yep, and the city administrator position is only 32 hours.
Right, that's what I was figuring, I just wanted to make sure that that was. Captured.
Oh, absolutely. Okay, any other comments or questions? Shall we vote? Counselor Ray?
Yes.
Counselor Lindner?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Cuthbertson?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Great, thank you all. All right, in the packet should be a list of property and equipment. Yep, right there. So long ago in a galaxy far, far away, we talked about this. And it just kind of fell to the wayside. And money is an issue for the city, I think we need to start thinking about selling some things. I know this is an equipment list, I don't know that we have a property list.
Here's one right before it.
In front of it, okay, right in front of it, ah, got it. I just gotta peel through the paper, no big deal. But I, I wanted to share this again because not everybody that's here was on council the first time around when we discussed this. But wanted to get your guys' thoughts on, and Mark's here too, so we can ask about equipment and property, he's familiar with both. On starting to go through. Well, and Dawn, the equipment, we actually, you did a training last week with a site that can help us with that, right?
Yes, I believe it was GovDeals and so I'm actually set up on their website.
Okay.
To any point we want to.
Okay, good, so we're set up at least with them if we wanna start selling equipment.
Okay.
Uh, and then property, you know, that's another matter, but.
The only thing that would concern me is that I know that this is old, so I think that our, our market values probably.
They probably have changed, yes, I would absolutely agree.
So, that would be.
We need an updated, we need updated values.
Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely, so.
Unfortunately, it could have gone either way.
I know, right?
I know.
Yeah, because I mean, we've been talking, you know, the Kyle Springs and the Bellnap Springs for ever 15 years or more.
Yeah, I know, I know.
But we, um, this, this would help, I mean, i, if you just look at how much it is, I mean, it's, it's just, it would be a step in the right direction. And then also before when we talked about doing the surplus, I think we did a resolution, I don't remember. And that we were gonna put it in, into the, a water fund or something to be able to help with the plant and all that because that's where we're mostly in need, is that correct?
And we may wanna, and we may wanna discuss that further because we also have a building, city hall that is in dire need of some sort of repair or retrofitting at some time.
Which, I get, I, it's really hard to prioritize those two because we gotta have water, everybody's gotta have water to survive.
Well, I think that the first two properties, the, the Bellnap, excuse me, the Bell Chamber.
Yes.
Properties could both be, you know, to another structure because there's a structure on it, even though it's not all of that property. And the two springs, we might wanna try to focus towards our water. Because that's what we're giving up is water. Although if you, has anybody here on the council other than me been up to those?
We've all gone up there.
We had a tour. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
We did one about three years ago.
Yeah, it would be really, really hard for us to get water out of there. I mean, because of all the regulations and trying to pump it here.
Yeah, and it's.
Well, I was shocked Kyle's, Kyle Springs was acquired in May of 1934. Wow, wow.
I, I would encourage anyone who can to go back and look at if, if they can find the meeting minutes from the discussion about Bellnap Springs because they're, it's kind of a contentious one, I have my thoughts on it and I'll, I'll be quiet about it.
Where's Bellnap, are, are we talking about Bell Chamber?
No, no, Bellnap is the very last one on, on the surplus real property.
Where's that at, up here somewhere?
It's up in the hills.
It's up in the hills.
And it's surrounded by privately owned timber and.
There are some people that are interested in it and wanna do it and, and some people have also wanted, you know, just for it to be donated, um, you know, to be able to preserve it. The only problem I would have with that is just that we gotta fix our problems, so we're.
Pretty big hole in the ground.
Yeah, and so I, I mean, and we've been talking about it for a long time, at that time when people came to, we were trying to encourage people to start looking forward to see if they could find a way to purchase it. And, and there's been time, yeah, there is an organization that was interested, so.
Well, just not, not to play environmentalists, but to play economics, I would say the timber on that's way more than $200,000.
Well, and that's where if, if we are going to sell it, we need to do what's in the best interest of the city. And we need to just really look at that, I mean, I'm. And we need to just really look at that. I mean, I, I, I love being able to donate and do things, but I also know that we're in a pickle. And if we don't take care of our pickle, it's gonna be a problem.
Yeah, we have to do it for the residents of Monroe. You know, if somebody buys it and doesn't wanna log it, that's fine. If they do wanna log it, they're gonna have to, to follow all the regulations.
Yeah, um, so the, the reason it's on, it's the last one in that series is because the last time this came up was council said that was a last resort property to sell because of its historic. Because of the spring and, and to Counselor Cuthbertson's point, we have to do its best for Monroe. And so there is the economic part to it, but there's also the, wouldn't it be nice if your progeny had access to historic spring?
And, and that's why it is on the bottom of the list. You're correct.
It would be great, but I don't know if we have access to open it up as a park. Because is our access only for the water? And do we have access to actually allow people to get in there to hike?
Um, we do have access to it through that little commune.
Over the other side.
The commune, I can't remember what they're called. It's, um.
Earth, Earth Rising.
Rising, yeah. Yeah.
But that's private property. Do we have an agreement with them?
No, we do not have.
And we don't have access.
Right. And, and the, the family that surrounds that property, very well respected, great family in the area, does have all the resources to appropriately and legally log it. There are four old growth trees on it, however, old, old growth. So the environmentalist in me, so of course, is not very happy about the prospect of that property selling. Again, I'm trying to set that on a shelf. I'm like.
I, I would rather see him cut the old growth and leave the third growth, which is gonna be healthier.
I thought there was an assessment done with the timber on that piece of property as well.
I believe there was with, with.
We need to dig all that up.
But isn't Kyle Spring on the same hillside? It's just kinda like on the other side a little bit.
I don't remember. I know we drove up to both of those springs on the same day as part of a field trip.
Yeah. But I, I do remember you had to go through somebody's private gate to get to it, right?
Yes, that's correct.
And there was a road all the way around it, like it was logged back in the twenties, I think.
Old, yeah, I think that's right, long time ago.
Wow.
So can we, do we need to make a motion to start moving on any of this? Like, it sounds like the equipment would be easier.
Yeah, I think we could. This is just my opinion, of course. We could start with equipment. And then we can work on getting the updated values for the property and circle back on this.
Yeah, and then do we wanna designate, do we need to designate again? Or do we remember what that res- resolution said before? Cause to the point of if we need to split it to something else, do we need?
I think we need to dig up the resolution and any of the, there was, there was meeting minutes and there was, you know, the timber report and all of that too.
I'd like to see these properties. I've never, I've never seen them. I don't, I couldn't make a determination where they're at.
Well, very excited.
Yeah, you and I haven't seen them.
I've never seen.
The mayor's, the mayor's van, right?
And we went.
It was fun.
This time we're bringing snacks.
I think I had to see it from afar.
Well, and then the two, there was some talk, um, on the one, the Bell Chamber.
That's the, that's the haunted house one, right?
The haunted house one, right?
Okay.
Um, was the fact that if we did have to do sand thingies or whatever for the water, sorry, I'm so tired. You guys just go with me. But if we need to do the sand filters or whatever, that, that also had some, gave us some extra land that was kinda close to, and if that would work. But then the highway, so we just didn't know. So that might be.
It also has a well on it, but.
It does have well, yeah.
Yeah.
But I think the well had mercury in it.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, that one, I, I'm not sure that one had mercury or the orange, the iron.
Was it mercury or iron on that one?
That one's iron.
Yeah.
A lot of iron and some other stuff.
I think it was iron, but then two, if the.
I did a well reports in the shared drive the other day and I found a few, but they're old.
But also if the, um, legislation goes through with the well taxing, that would really be difficult for the city as well. So.
I don't know if that's gonna happen or not.
I don't know either.
I just looked at the list.
And I, I think that there was some interest from a local nonprofit that had the means to purchase one of the Bell Chamber properties, right? Like a, I don't know if it was.
The thought was like, uh, Long Calm Watership Council.
Yeah, somebody wanted to do conservation wetland type work there.
I think it was mostly the, the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know if it was the house.
That was logged back in the twenties. There's no true old growth there. There's just second growth.
Oh, we're talking Bell Chamber?
Yep.
Oh.
You're talking about Bell Chamber or Bellnap?
Bellnap.
Bellnap, okay. They were talking about Bell Chamber.
Old growth up there.
Alright.
Yeah.
True old growth is probably about as big as round from, from that end of that where Mark's sitting to where Dan's sitting.
Yeah.
A little bit smaller maybe, but.
Yeah.
I could take into some down on the south coast.
Nice. Anyone mind if I turn on the lights?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes.
Why is it getting dark so early?
Cause the lights aren't on.
Early?
Let there be light.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. No, it's fine. It's fine. I can actually read what I'm looking at now.
You know, what would screw us over is there, there was a marbled marolet or a spotted owl.
I think we're past, I think we're past spotted owl. It's a misnomer anymore. Apparently, apparently there was something else killing the spotted owl.
Spotted owls. Now there's spartans and two.
Yeah.
I think there was some killing them.
I killed a pygmy owl one time. That was just because it flew down.
Oh, man, on tape.
So I'm looking.
I took it under the agencies.
Oh, good.
I'm looking for a motion on the equipment. And we don't have to do one on the property right now, or you could wrap it all up and, but you'd have to be very detailed in your motion.
Remove from sale inventory? Is that stuff that?
Yeah, so I, if I remember correctly, it was determined that the city needs, these are right aways for utilities for the city. I don't know if it's water, wastewater or what. But yeah, they were pulled because of that, their right aways.
Which one?
Uh, this North of Kelly on Six. So remove from sale inventory. It's on the surplus reel property sheet.
Yeah, it's kinda being used as a parking.
Right now, but yeah, there's.
Kinda like if you come off the Dollar General sidewalk.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Going straight, that, straight toward the gravel. It's right in that area. And it cuts between the, the old train station. There's a, I don't know, but marble, but it's kinda like a tile floor.
Yeah. Yeah, where the old passenger depot was.
It's in there.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Surveyors were there today.
Oh, were they? Really?
They had a few questions about some of that stuff.
How exciting.
Point oh seven acres. So what do you need with point oh seven acres?
Okay.
Put a clause in it.
Well, any other questions on the, either the equipment or the property before we do a motion of some sort?
We can do it.
We're gonna do the sell on the equipment, but are we holding off on the property then?
Yeah, cause we need to get, we need to get updated values. These are, these are out of date.
This is big.
Yeah, so we'll get updated values.
Thanks, that's where I was gonna go. I was gonna say, if we put the property off, that's fine, but if I start getting rid of equipment that we don't need, just sitting around, that would be great.
That you don't have spots for anymore. Yes.
Missing building now.
Probably a lot of little, little fire agencies around the state.
I was gonna say, and there's probably more stuff throughout too. And then this is just the big stuff that.
Yeah, yeah.
Sitting in random spots, just taking up space.
Yeah.
But now that it's starting to dry up, people are gonna be wanting stuff. So it's a good time to sell as well. So.
Yes, there you go. Okay. Oh, yeah, totally. Okay.
I can tell.
So.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, sell the list of surplus city equipment. List on, list on page one, starting with the F three fifty flatbed and ending with the Ford Tiger sire, side mower. Excluding all the surplus real property.
Oh, I'll second.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Do we have to do the thing where we make it surplus or did we already do that? We need to look at our paperwork, right?
So, I mean, the whole Gov Deals thing. So Dawn's taking the training, so I don't know what more.
Okay.
We probably need to do a little investigating if we need to do something in between.
Yeah.
Before we throw it up on there.
Thing for like when we did the library transfer. So I know we have to do it with property, but I just don't know.
Yeah, about the equipment, I'm not sure.
Okay, so, and we may have already done that because I remember something about that before, but I don't know if we did or just discussed it.
If there's a.
Department's been using that dot gov.
Yeah.
Clearing house for a long, long time.
Or equipment, you need to find out.
Buying equipment.
Yeah. No, I think that's a great way to do it.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure that we're doing it right. Don't get trouble.
Okay, so this will.
Since the nineties, so.
Alright, okay, you ready to vote?
Yep.
Yep.
Yep, okay. Alright. Counselor Myers.
Yes.
Counselor Cuthbertson.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Lindner.
Yes.
Counselor Ray.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Alright. Uh, item on the agenda five dot seven. So I have it as City Hall Assessment for Reinforcing Rebuilding Structure. So we've talked about City Hall. We know that that building had children. Anyway, um, we know that the building needs help. We just, we, we got an opinion from a seismic engineer, I think it was, last year. And they felt that the building probably needs to be torn down now because of the bricks that are used. However, we've had other conversations and maybe we need to get a second opinion from someone else, maybe reinforcing the building or something.
I was there for that and it was not a recommendation to tear the building down. That was somebody's recommendation, but not his recommendation.
Gotcha.
He did recommend, yes, tear the building down, remodel the building, whatnot. Um, I also did just sit in, uh, the fire department's budget meeting and learned that they got a pretty hefty grant to redo their building specifically for this.
Okay.
So I was gonna ask him what grant that is and if it's just a fire department thing or if it's open to.
I might have seen it and it may just be a fire department one.
I'll ask and get, yeah.
Or is it safety? Because we do have the sheriff's department.
Well, I mean, we could do it, we could see about a joint building. I mean, that's, that's a possibility to a joint.
You can tie into the safety every time.
My question is if it's, if it's the bricks used, it's the same bricks on this building.
Correct.
Right, and they're, they're not tearing down or rebuilding anything. They're doing a rehab.
A retrofit.
They're retrofitting it, yeah.
Sure inside.
Correct.
So there was no recommendation ever at any point from a professional to tear down the building.
The gentleman did say you can tear it down, start from scratch. He said you can rehab the entire building. Those were the two options.
But the entire building or the, or the east side that has the crack in it?
So the problem is, so the east side that has a crack in it, the, the building's all the same. It's all built out of the same stuff. It's all reinforced the same.
For the terracotta brick.
So it's, yes, that'll terracotta. So you're either reinforcing that or tearing it down and building from scratch. So it would be the whole building. Minus, minus the shop in the back, which is an addition later on, which is timber built.
So there had to be a report that they would have provided us, right?
I don't know. I'm assuming that there was some.
I'd be interested to see what the recommendations were because.
We'll see if there's a report.
Yeah, we're documented or not.
But Chuck, you're still in the room and I remember you talking about a building, I think it was in Harrisburg, that's older than our City Hall. And you guys had someone come and do some reinforcement on it.
So we redid the Justice Center, the old City Hall, which was started in nineteen thirty-four, concluded in nineteen thirty-one. We did an upgrade to it in twenty eighteen. They unlocked, we did some upgrades. And the one who did the assessment and output the plans is actually on staff. You signed that. Paperwork to have a city.
Oh, okay, perfect. Okay. Yeah, we will then. Okay.
And he would do a report saying this is.
Okay, okay. So do we wanna go ahead? And we just need the city attorney to sign that paperwork for the engineering record. Once we have that, we can go. Of course, we have to pay to have them do the assessment.
Yeah.
So I don't know how much that would be, but we can, we can find out.
Can we ask him?
Of course, we can ask them.
Determine if we can. Yeah, you're gonna, it's. Oh, I guess it's gonna have to happen either way.
But my next question is, are we gonna have to have this one re-inspected too?
Yeah, I mean.
Maybe, um. Let's, let's do.
Do one thing.
One at a time right now. I, I'm, I'm just worried that that building is occupied, you know, Monday through Friday, eight to five. So it, you know, I, the public goes in that building. We need to, we need to focus on it.
No, I don't, I don't disagree with that. I just also know that at some point there's the, the money bag is not.
Right, I understand. Right, so.
And just one, step one piece further, you will need a stamped plan from the engineer.
Yes.
Structural engineer, scientist, to be able to get grants under an emergency.
Right.
Issue, you have to be able, uh, so and so told somebody.
Right.
Right, right.
Yeah, it has to be done to get the grants, correct.
Okay, so do we want me to ask the engineer of record, once that paperwork is signed, if they can tell us how much it would cost to have them come out and do an assessment on that building?
Yeah, cause I think we need to try to move forward as quick as we can on it.
Okay.
And, you know, I mean, we just might need to see where we can scooch money from.
Okay, cause if we check USGS, there's a lot of activity lately.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, we probably need to do some type of motion on this, so it's.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we, um, authorize mayor to approach the engineering, city of, uh, engineering of record to, uh, approach the subject of reinforcing and inspecting and reinforcing the city hall.
And finding out the cost of what that.
Find out the cost is.
Yep.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Alright, any other comments or questions? Okay, we'll vote then. Counselor Myers.
Yes.
Counselor Cuthbertson.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Lindner.
Yes.
And Counselor Ray.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. On the page. Okay, so five dot eight, emergency planning and does it need MCC as city hall backup? So this is just thinking ahead a little bit. So if we get the assessment on City Hall, we decide to move forward and do some things with that building, we're gonna need a backup place while that building is being retrofitted. So I'm just throwing that, th- this building as being the backup. I know it's made out of the same brick and everything. But the roof and the roof line is different on this building.
Yeah, this one has a different roof support.
Yeah, the, the city hall roof is not a good situation.
Is a big issue.
Yeah.
It'd be temporary and it doesn't have an active crack in the mortar.
Right, this is, there is that.
The weekends.
Right, so I just, I'm throwing it out there. We don't have to vote on it. I just thought I'd make it a discussion point, see how you guys feel about that. I mean, I know it's a little ahead.
It, yeah, but you know what we might think about, and this sounds really ridiculous when I'm over here saying, save money, save money, is could they assess both buildings? Because one might be cheaper to do than the other and.
That's a valid point.
It might be a thought. And if they're already coming out, maybe it would be cheaper than if we have to do one at one time and one at another time.
I don't know. I, I know, it's a good, it's a good thought. I don't know that we can. Yeah, I don't think we can get like bulk discount unfortunately from engineers, architects, geologists.
Chuck.
Yeah, the mobilization.
Say, it'll be two, two buildings.
Okay.
Right.
If they travel from Portland, you have.
We could save fifty bucks on mileage.
One of the other things, the thing about, just to throw down there on the same point, is when they do an assessment on City Hall, they will be able to give an estimated timeline of how long it will be under construction.
Okay.
Oh.
If it was only a month or two versus a year, then you could decide whether.
Right.
Have an idea.
Yep, okay.
You'd have more information.
Right, and, and I guess to that point, if we knew about both.
Yeah.
I don't know. Anyway, it just might be something we think about.
Yep.
If it might be working.
Own both buildings.
I know.
My guess is, I mean, be- because the buildings are similar to each other, whatever they say for that is probably similar to what we would get for, I mean, different price, but like.
Yeah, sure.
Here's what would need to be done.
The roofs are different though. They, the roof on city hall.
It's the wall, the roof.
Yeah.
That's the biggest issue over there.
That, that roof is really, they did a roof over a roof and they, wasn't that what they did?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's my only concern.
Attach it properly.
Correct. Issues, issues, issues. Okay, so just putting it out there.
Yeah, we would have to worry about city staff using the kitchen and having a big party. They can have a.
Party as long as they're doing their job, I don't care. Clean up. Such a mom thing as. That's funny. Okay, all right, we're done.
We could also think about, where council chambers are over there.
Mm-hmm.
Why not remodel the whole place, make it a little bit bigger?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's a possibility too.
Maybe STCs can.
Well, the old library spot, is that still empty?
Yeah, yeah.
There's lots of different places we can work with.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, we did have plans to remodel that entire building, basically.
Yeah.
Leave the courthouse, the courthouse, but, you know, upgrade floors and all that stuff. And then city hall would basically take over the other two rooms and just be expanded, break room, all that crazy fancy stuff.
Cause that's the other thing Dawn reminded me of, was there isn't actually an official break room.
Right.
There isn't.
Bookroom in the back.
Right, and there's not really a kitchen per se.
Right.
I mean, you guys have got a bathroom.
Yeah.
Woo-hoo. Yes, sir.
Once again, um, if you have your structural report.
Yes.
Sit down for your pre-designing, structural report, will actually talk about where structures would have to be reinforced for those rooms to happen. And in your pre-design meeting, you can say, we're looking at this, this, and this. And they did bring you back design based on what.
Okay.
And the building.
Right.
Perfect.
Excellent. Okay, very good. Okay. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and move on to five dot nine here. Um, so this has got recommendations to support current and future development here in Monroe. We've already talked about the engineer record, so we're on our way. I just have to have the city attorney sign the, the, the con, the agreement to extend it so that. So we're, we're almost there, practically there. Um, I, and I mentioned earlier in the city report. I really believe that we need to look at updating, amending Monroe's land use development code. Um, it is out of date and I'll just say it that way. It is. Um, also, I think we need to also look at the fees, the fee schedule, the forms. I mentioned all that again in the city report earlier. I don't even know if there's actually a fee schedule for planning stuff.
Dig it list.
On your to get list, okay, cool. So, and I know there's some forms and we're, we're looking at being an applicant for the UGB expansion. So we need to have a fee to charge the applicant to process that. So we don't have one, so we need to figure out what that is.
Fifty bucks.
And then there's like pre-application, uh, meetings. I know we were talking to the manager over, the city manager over in Philomath. I can't remember what he said. Do you remember Mark? Was it like, was it three hundred dollars?
I think it was about three hundred dollars.
Yeah, that they charge, but.
Yeah.
The pre-app, uh, meetings, they have the engineers there, the planners there, public works is there. I mean, of course, the applicant and then whoever they bring is there. So we gotta pay for all these people's time.
Absolutely, cuz we get charged for it.
Right, so again, we need to look at, you know, covering our costs. So I wanted to throw all of that out there. Um, I don't know if we need a motion or not, but, um, with the development code, um, I was gonna go ahead and reach back out with DLCD. And Patrick, and he said that there might be a technical grant, I mentioned that earlier, and see what we need to do. And I can come back with that information, let you guys know. And then with, um, the, uh, and that's to get the development, get some help in here and help us get the, the code updated. Um, with the fees and all that, I think we need to work with the planning commission. And, uh, maybe start with a smaller group like the chair and maybe a couple, I don't know.
Planner.
The planner and sit down and hammer that out and present it to the commission.
If you, if you could come up with like a cost estimate for all people that have to be there.
Right.
Would be the first start.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah.
Got an audience.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
About seeing this, I was in a discussion with Mark and a few others on, and what you were charging for this is that. And maybe each of your committees, say, public works committee, looks at those fees for that because.
Okay.
A lot of things that we were talking about, the, the, and SDCs and things like that.
Right.
That are not being charged when the developer comes in, or when the buyer decides to do.
Right.
The rest of the property, what fees you don't capture from that means the rest of the deficits are being.
Right.
Yeah.
And see, just in our conversation, several things working from that, so.
Right.
Right.
While the planning's a big issue and that's the big money, um, it looks like your whole fee schedule.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
What's going on with the UGB? I was confused the last time. Thought there was a swap.
Yeah, I thought there was two and then all of a sudden there wasn't. Now I don't know what's going on.
So the swap is a no-go. So that, but there is, there was some legislation, um, that was passed. And for, um, for like, a small city like Monroe, I think it's up to fifty acres can be, um, brought into the UGB. And so the property over there, um, just west of Red Hills, I think it's just about maybe just a tiny bit over fifty acres.
Something, I think it's real close. At the planning commission meeting with, when Patrick was here, he said that what was over there, uh, sounded doable.
Okay, so that there, there is a process to, it's basically making an exception, but bringing that into the city.
For the, is it north of Red Hills?
It's west.
West of Red Hills.
Yeah, just right on the big corner there on Orchard, of those two properties that are for sale.
Yeah.
It would be those two properties that are for sale over there.
Anything above like Tenth Street on?
Yes, so, uh, that, the whole S curve there, basically that property that's for sale there, and then on the second curve, that property that runs on the south side.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, and it was also the matter of like the utilities, cuz you don't want septic tanks above you.
No.
And that's what it would be if it was county.
Yeah.
I know.
We can, we can, it just makes good sense.
Bring it into the city and that's all, city water.
Desirable too, I think, for development.
Yeah.
Especially on the septic tanks because they're not allowed within a certain distance of municipal.
Uh. Gotcha.
Then your development would be cut short because they're just gonna say no.
Right.
Right. There you go.
If you're outside, it would be outside reads.
Mm-hmm.
I need to say it, but we probably have septic tanks inside the city.
We do.
Oh, we do. Yeah.
I found one when I built my house in ninety-six.
We have an old one that's filled in at our house. Yeah. Okay. So, um. I'll go ahead if council is okay with me reaching back out to DLCD.
Yep.
About the technical grant, see what that's all about and come back, um, with the fees and all that. I think what Chuck was saying. We need to, we need to dig and see if there is anything.
Dig and see if I can find new backbones.
Then we need to start working through the committees and get those updated or added or amended, whatever the case may be. Okay. Um, if we're okay, I'm gonna move on from this particular one.
One thing is.
Yes.
Um, are we gonna affect any of the projects in fly with these new fees?
Possibly. The UGB expansion one, definitely.
Yeah, but I'm talking about some of the other ones that, I don't know where they're at.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, to be honest.
Planning mid-commission fees, anything like that.
So I don't know quite yet. I don't think we have our arms completely around everything yet. And Michael's been out.
He's been. Well, I wanna see some neighbors.
Right, so.
And, and he's the one that, um, it was either here, Patrick had brought this up and said that we needed to get in line, get it in line. And so I think that they're gonna be trying to help us. Make sure that we're doing that. I think that's kind of why it's getting pushed forward so quickly, so that we can have it in place before they start, so they can collect the proper fees. And make sure that our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed.
Because we're getting into building construction.
Yes, we are.
Benton County was out surveying.
Mm-hmm.
Owners had it surveyed and then Benton County came out and surveyed it again today.
Yeah, we're a little late. We need to get moving.
In my driveway.
Yeah.
That's where the, the line is, but if you notice the other side, it's way on the other side.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead if we're okay, moving on to the, um, last item of new business. Yep, five dot ten. So I'll look at the calendar in May, our regular city council meeting on the fourth Monday, it lands on Memorial Day. So I'm suggesting that we push it to Tuesday, which is the day after Memorial Day. So, is everybody okay with that?
I thought you were gonna say the twentieth, but, yeah, that worked.
So that would be twenty-seventh, if you're okay with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
I'm just trying to get my calendar to work.
I may have to zoom in, but I'll be there.
We'll take it any way we can. Zoom or not. Counselor Ray, Counselor Lindner, is that okay?
Yep, at this moment, yes.
Okay.
That'll be my last city council meeting for a little while.
Right.
Yep.
Just a little bit.
She's, she's gonna.
She's gonna, yes.
She's gotta, she's gotta plan her wedding. We gotta, we gotta give her time to do that, or she won't come back, okay?
That guy will never come back down here again.
Now, that's who that was.
Yeah.
Then see him in a while.
Alrighty, um, old business. Uh, Dawn, did you want to talk on this one? Review and discuss utility billing due date adjustment. We talked about it last month. Didn't know if there were still questions. We talked about maybe, maybe not, I don't know. Um, did you, you wanna talk about it again? We've got Dawn.
She. So I, and if there's any questions, we can start with those. Um, their, their main goal with, with changing the bill date. Is A to lessen the number of counts past due with, with service still on. So currently we have between thirty and fifty. Um, accounts that are passed due each month. I had forty-seven this month. Um, and so that really adds to city halls load at the end of the month. We have, so we're prepping for our council meetings. I have to have financials printed, all my APs entered. Uh, which right now Mayor Dan is approving. We have to do the meter reads, billing, past due letters that week. Um, then with chat, prepping for council right now, I'm also doing packet assembly, printing checks, make sure positive pay is submitted and payroll. It's all like within the same week or week and a half. And it's a lot on city staff when it could really easily be kind of portioned out a little bit better.
All I remember is we, we were, I think we were, most of us were for, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the big issue is. How many billing cycles that we notify people that it's gonna change.
Mm-hmm, right.
Yeah, and we have no problems. I mean, it, it could be two months, it could be three months, um, really whatever. We feel would be reasonable for a heads up. Um, and I think that the way we're doing announcements now, the billing, and I could be wrong, you guys could let me know your input. We are doing colored sheets, front to back and full pages, to kind of grab people's attention a little bit better. Um, if it's something of major importance, we're trying to add. Like stapling little pieces of paper that are, are colored, um, kind of to the front portion of the bill, so they kind of have to look at it to look at their total due. Um, so we're trying our best to get the announcements out and get them read. Um, but whatever you feel would be best, and this is not. An absolute need, but there is a lot of overlap, um. With people that owe about a month and a half to two months of billing before they're getting their, their notes out for the past due. Just with the way everything falls.
So there's a lot happening at the same time, the same week at this point. This would kind of help spread things out a little bit.
We also have new meters going in right now and that's quite the process with billing. I have to do two different prorated bills and then, then correct them online manually as well.
That was a nice notice you put in the bills, though.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's about the, uh. Possible shortage, water outage type of thing.
Yeah.
So I, I think, you know, two billing cycles notice could be enough maybe, especially if you do it with a bright orange or bright yellow paper.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, what anybody else thinks.
Big bold letters.
It doesn't have to be the fifteenth. That's just a suggestion. I know that's what they do in Junction City. Um, I think there's quite a few other cities that do the fifteenth for billing. Um, we would still have it out in plenty of time. Most people would have at least two weeks. Um, with when we bill it out, as to when it's due, we can also change. Um, not only the due date, but the bill date and meter read date. It, all of that is flexible.
Okay. Does meter read date is the twenty-third right now?
Or as close as possible, yes.
Okay, okay.
So, it sounds like to me if you start like adding a little flyer in there, letting people kind of know this is a possibility and common, that way they can maybe throw some input out there. You know, get back with us or, I don't really see any issue with it, but. I think last time my only concern was, um, I didn't, but I think it was kind of cleared up a little bit about social security checks and when people get them and it sounds like they get them all different times of the month.
Yeah.
Just depending on their number, so that shouldn't be an issue then.
I think it will be an issue for people who, you know, I mean, we don't know when everybody's getting these checks. And for people who are on fixed incomes, it's gonna be a readjustment of their budget. And that's, that's a significant impact for a lot of our community members.
They might end up owing a month and a half's worth instead of just a month.
That's my concern.
The way, depending on where it lands.
Well, another option is we could have a public meeting and invite people to come to it and provide input, see how they feel about it.
Yeah.
I was saying, you know, maybe throw some flyers in the bill and say, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna possibly do this, you know, we're gonna have a public meeting and.
And watch Zero show up.
Well, you give them the opportunity. I know, I realize this.
We did.
I know, I know.
We tried.
But also when this change does, if it does pass and goes into effect, I mean, city staff will be fielding a lot of inquiries.
Right.
And that will eat up time as well, so.
Well, and I'm hoping if, if we do.
People in place.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
Well, if we, if we do a public meeting and we talk about it, and then we give a couple of months' notice, hopefully by then we'll have some more people in city hall, uh, to help out. I, it would be doable, I think.
Yeah, no, I think it's definitely doable, but I think there are some considerations to consider. I, I think it, to have it open to public comment would be.
Yeah.
Beneficial.
That's definitely a start.
Due diligence.
Yeah, a couple, a couple of flyers in two months' worth.
Yeah.
Saying we're gonna have a city meeting such, or, yeah, some kind of town hall, whatever.
Right.
That'd sound good.
Okay. Well, I can look at the calendar and I can see what date might work. Sometimes Saturdays work, sometimes they don't. Can, I'm just, you know.
Yeah.
Saturdays are kind of weird. The weather's getting nice now.
Getting better, that's gonna be a challenge. And if, depending on how far we push it, if school's out, then people will be gone on vacation and stuff too, so.
Uh, thanks to Counselor Cuthbertson, we did get the billing out today, so it would have to be next month if we're sending out any notice anyways.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, gotcha. All right. Okay. All right. Yes, sir. You're fine, go ahead.
I've seen a couple do this, and the one that worked the best is they gave, they adjusted by about twenty days.
Wow.
They can start working for it. And they put out notice, put out notice, put out notice that was doing it. And then when they switched, what they did is then do late fees for the next several billing cycles. So people would get these late, you missed the new billing day, but there was no late fee. And on that notice, late fees will start accumulating here in three months.
I like that.
Two months.
Yeah.
The next month, it was, it ended up having six months of it, working to adjust their, um.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Finances now.
The new number and that worked real well for that city.
That's a good idea. That's a great idea.
Like it.
I think it is.
Okay.
Were you able to hear that, Dawn?
Did hear the portion where he's, he mentioned that there wasn't any late fees for the first several months, I think, correct?
Right.
Yeah, it'll be an issue. I mean, right now I'm, I'm seeing a consistent, like I said, thirty to fifty every month that are passed due, um, regardless, so.
Yeah.
It, it could affect people in the short run, but if we do have some sort of public meeting and people do show and give us their opinion, um, they can maybe suggest even a different date. Um, and I'm open to that as well. I'm just trying to get, to get it to where not everything is so compact in that one week.
Right.
I agree.
So if we were to change the due date to the fifteenth as an example, when meter read date, how would, where would that shift to, I guess?
So that wouldn't necessarily need a shift. That's why I suggested that event, you know, at first. But if Mark is willing and able to shift the read date and we feel that a different due date is sufficient, we can always go with that as well. Like, we can coordinate that, public works and, and the front office staff and council can of course all. Coordinate what they think would work best.
Okay. Okay, okay. All right, very good. Yes, sir.
I was just wondering if we have a when we do the transition, we have it like a twenty day or fifteen day difference from when we trans, transition the due date, is it gonna be prorated, like the minimum, is that gonna be prorated for two weeks worth?
It would be prorated. Um, that's currently what we do for final billing anyways. So say there's thirty days in a billing cycle. But we only bill for twenty of those. It would be prorated based on the number of days in that.
Minimum's prorated then, okay.
Yeah.
Unless, of course, I go over the minimum usage, right?
Um, then it would be prorated still for the number of days it was used, just at, of course, the gallons they use would also be prorated in there, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So it sounds like we need to figure out a date to have a, a public meeting. And then we need to, we'll need to advertise it. And then see where we go from there, about the due date, the meter read date's gonna be adjusted, whatever the case may be. Get input, see where we go from there. I think that's basically where we're at, I think. Okay, all right. Thank you, Dawn. I appreciate it.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and move on to uh, six dot two, six tot, shit. I can't even talk, I'm sorry for the language. Six dot two, enunciate. All right, reader building and property update. There you go, Mark, you can follow that.
Rear building's gone. Still taped off, caution tape up. Uh, we gotta get over there with the magnet, make sure we get all the nails and stuff cleaned up. Um, here soon, we'll get out there with a couple truckloads of gravel, respread it, get it all flattened out nice. An app for now, the plan was with the previous city administrator was to get those two um, modular buildings and move City Hall into those. Um, I think we've decided that's a, a no-go. Leasing those sounded like a horrible idea. Might be a good idea in the short run while we're updating City Hall, but not for a permanent City Hall structure. But other than that, we got a vacant lot there now. Um, there's some stuff that's on the sale list that's stored in the backpack there now, but.
The uh, bus shelters on here too.
The bus shelters um, are not on the surplus property list. It could be. But they.
There was someone in the community that was interested in them. She just hasn't come over to look at them yet.
Correct. And there was one other person interested as well, but I don't think. There are a couple trees in question on the west side of the lot. The neighbor. There's a little bit of an argument on who owns them, when clearly you can see where the, the survey marker is, the trees are on that side. But I think um, with the previous city administrator, um, him and I agreed that we would just go ahead and take those trees down. And I think we're still gonna honor that, but the gentleman who is asking about the trees has somebody that is very interested in the wood. So I, if everybody's okay with it, I'll just take the trees down, move them to his property with the Kubota and let his buddy take care of the rest. And other than that.
You're doing him a public service.
Yeah.
Building's gone and.
Did that invasive vine get removed, you know? There is a really big Japanese kudzu vine or something that was growing.
Like the bamboo style type thing that's back there?
I don't know if it's bamboo style. It's a vine that just takes over. Um, if there's no vine growing right now, then it's probably taken.
But there's this bamboo stuff that just takes over everything back there.
Bamboo's invasive, can be.
I don't think it's bamboo though, it's some kind of, it, it is an invasive thing. I don't know what it is.
I mean, if, if it's gone, then that's great. That's, I was just wondering, I don't know if that person wants the tree, if it has that growing throughout it. But if he's gonna cut it down and turn it into firewood anyway, maybe it doesn't matter.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mark.
Um, I have an update for eleven thirty-five since John Reedon is not here.
Go for it.
Um, so he sent an email update out about ten days ago. And he said the design, the design phase of the project is underway. Army Corps engineers have been on site over the last few months. They're collecting data on existing culverts, testing sediment levels in the riverbed and meeting with ODOT engineers on any issues related to the Highway ninety-nine bridge. Among other activities. Um, the Army Corps has received full funding to complete the design vase, phase, including the cost share funds paid to the Army Corps by the Long Tom Watershed Council on behalf of Monroe. The Long Tom Watershed Council also secured state grants for a new water intake for the city and transferred the first payment of fifteen thousand dollars to the city for maintenance of the new water intake system once completed. The full fifty thousand dollar maintenance fund will be transferred to the city upon completion of the project. Finally, the, the Long Tom Watershed Council is issuing a request for proposals to select an engineering firm to design in and install the new city water intake. This work will be completed in close collaboration with the City of Monroe, city staff and the Army Corps. The tentative timeline is for the Army Corps to complete the thirty percent designed documents by late summer or early fall. This work will be completed in coordination with design documents for the new water intake system. Once the thirty percent design documents are completed, city staff, the eleven thirty-five project advisory committee and the city council will have time to review, ask questions and make modifications as needed. And then John closed by saying that he will keep everyone updated, but no um, eleven thirty-five committee meeting scheduled at this time.
Okay. Thank you for the update. Okay, any questions for the counselor on that? Good update. Um, I wanted to circle back really quick, I apologize. Uh, going back to five dot five. So we're obviously going to have a gap uh, between Gobby leaving and hiring someone at City Hall. Um, how do we feel about temporary help?
Yes, I said that I would come down.
But I am no use to people.
I support tempo. You mean like through a temp agency?
Yeah, yeah, I've, I actually have contacted a couple city managers and they don't have anybody they can spare, which is fine. I just thought I'd ask. Yeah.
We need it.
All right, so we'll look into that.
I mean, her salary is already budgeted, so it should be able to.
Yeah, all right. Okay, sorry. Quick distraction, back to it here.
I didn't see on that.
I don't know why that's in the packet.
Was it the TNT thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was wondering that too.
I don't know. So Dawn, we have an interesting item in the packet, didn't know why it was in there. But it's regarding the, the TNT uh, ball field. Didn't know if that was an accident or if there was something that we needed to sign again on that.
I didn't see a number on it, so I didn't.
Wherever it went. I guess we lost her. Okay, I don't know who that is. Okay, that's where I'm going with it.
That's what I think, because we had talked about it and doing the update, so it might just be in there to show us that the updates were done and stuff.
Yeah, we talked about the liability and all that stuff.
Maybe it wasn't, it was just a thing. Oh, good. It was just. Sorry.
All good.
All right, all right, I'm going to assume it's just a leftover and we'll move on. Nope, that's okay. Uh, moving on to uh, section seven here. City events, so uh, there is the Blackberry Jam, it's in August, don't have an exact date. Torin will let me know.
What is, what is the Blackberry Jam?
Um, they have it over at the food pantry and it's music and it's jam.
Yeah, okay. Food drive. You bring canned food also in exchange for like barbecue and stuff.
Yep, so um, Torin has approached me and he asked about if I would do a proclamation, which I'm totally fine with that. And then he's designing banners to go along the, the highway. So I'll get him connected with the telephone company so that I can see about hanging those. Um, also, the sheriff kind of alluded to this earlier. So the Monroe Oktoberfest and the First Responders Appreciation Day, they're going to be on the same day. Uh, we're having some issues coordinating between the fire department, police department, you know, everything, which is, I totally understand. The sheriff's a popular guy. They want him all over the place. So we landed on having it on the same day because we're gonna have people in town anyway. We're gonna have kids here anyway. So why not? It'll be over at the fire station, the fire chiefs approved it, so that's what we're doing. So um, beyond that, uh, down to other business. Uh, we've got the proposed supplemental budget public hearing on May twelfth. Economic development on May fifteenth, our next person, finance and personnel meetings, May fourteenth. It sounds like we're gonna have a public works meeting here soon. Uh, the library negotiations ad hoc committee that will dissolve um, on June thirtieth. Uh, our next work session will be after the uh, budget public hearing on May twelfth. And the next planning commission meeting is on May sixth. The planning commission meetings, FYI, they've moved from Monday, the first Monday of the month to the first Tuesday. To accommodate our city planner who comes in on Tuesdays. And then we just have him stay for the meeting at night, so. Beyond that, was there any counselor comments?
I want to say thank you to our staff for working extra and doing so much to keep this town afloat. Thank you. And thank you Chuck Schultz for helping us so much as well.
I second that, thank you. It's greatly appreciated.
Any other counselors? No, I don't have any comments, I've talked enough.
Yes, who all do we have on economic development anymore?
Uh, that'd be you and me and Stan Salat and Nick Rich. And I think Eliza Mason is on there and um, Todd Nystrom. And I'm pretty sure I'm missing one or two other people.
Yeah, because we've canceled out the last couple.
I know, because we've, I found a bunch of documentation and I can't seem to get everybody back on track to meet again. Availability has been an interesting issue, so we'll, we'll try, we'll try to wrangle everybody into something here and meet. Any other comments? Nothing more? Okay, another successful meeting. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
The longest I was in went to like.